Hi Noah. Okay. We're gonna open session. Call to order, and we're gonna do a flag salute. So I am, um, let's see. Chris Regan, can you lead us in a flag salute?
Sure.
Thank you.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your hearts. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Okay, um, approval of the agenda, item five.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Moved by Mr. Goldstein, seconded by myself. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Extensions, noes, okay. Thank you, it's four, zero. Now, uh, report of closed session, Dr. Bregge.
In closed session, uh, this afternoon, the board voted three to zero to approve the settlement agreement for student number 13682.
Thank you. So, um, we have kids here from youth and government, and they have finals and a lot of work to do, so we're gonna let them go ahead of, um, agenda hearing, period, public comment.
And I'd like to welcome at this time, uh, Dr. Lu Sang, who will come in and, uh, introduce us to our Youth and Government Day.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Let me just begin by saying, and I say this every time I talk about youth and government, one of my favorite events of the school year. It's so wonderful to see the children, the students, at the dais, um, conducting their student council meeting. So one of my favorite things to do. So while I am up here, can I have my youth and government students? Anybody here? Can you please come here to the podium? And I want you... So these eighth graders wrote an essay on what they would do if they were on student council to improve businesses coming into our city and just increase revenue and travel, um, travel through our city, and how they would help bring in, um, different demographics to spend more money in our city. So these were some of our sixteen finalists. I am gonna ask you, please, to come to the microphone to state your name and your position, and then we're going to line up in front of the school board, and then we'll take pictures, and we will pass a proclamation, okay?
Hi, my name is Jayden Belexa, and I was the mayor.
Hi, I'm Emma Newman, and my position was vice mayor.
Hi, I'm Chloe Levine, and my position was a city council member.
I'm Jennifer Lee, and I was the planning commissioner.
I'm Sabrina Kamla, and I was the city attorney.
I'm Eli Raymer, and I was, uh, city treasurer.
Hi, my name is Rod Nick Vardrum, and I was director of community development.
So, Madam President and Dr. Bregge, we would like to please pass the pro- the city proclamation to you. We will ask our student mayor to, um, to give it to both of you, please. We're right here.
We'll be right here.
Thank you, everybody. Students did a fabulous job. Bye, guys. Thank you so much. Good luck on your finals. I'm looking forward to fabulousness in the next few years from each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. My kids, my older kids, each got one of those opportunities. It was exciting, and it's still in their rooms, framed, hanging, everything. Mr. Margot has something to say?
Yeah, hi. Um, I'm, I'm gonna be, uh, it's a weird night for me 'cause it's the Taste of Broadway show, and I do percussion for, um, that program. So I'm gonna be in and out of the room tonight. Please, nobody take it personally. I just, I'm running over here in between rehearsal numbers, and then the show starts at seven fifteen, seven thirty-ish or something. So, uh, I just wanted to give that announcement so people don't wonder what I'm doing. I'm just over across at the salter. Thank you. I'm, my next number is going, so I'm stepping out. Thank you.
All right, now, uh, thank you, Mr. Margot. Okay, um, we are now at agenda hearing, period, public comment. So, um, we have quite a few, so we're going to keep it at, well, not that many, but, um, maximum is three minutes. And, um, I, if someone has ceded your time, you'll have five minutes. But if three people cede your time, you don't have twelve minutes. It's five minutes, okay? So I'm gonna call up three, four people at a time so that you guys can get some, a chance to get out of your chairs. Colleen Davenport, and your time was ceded by Alex Moon. Ethan Smith. Chris Boucher. And your time was, was ceded by Josh Glass. And Gabby Rodonsky. And your time was ceded by Anastasia Theo. Thank you.
Good evening, Beverly Hills Community and Board of Education. My name is Colleen Davenport, and I stand here again tonight as a representative of CSEA, Local Chapter 328, representing the classified staff of BHUSD. As an employee of this district for the past twenty-one years, I have seen the good, the bad, and now the ugly. In the good days, I was younger, taking in every bit of mentoring from my colleagues and the administrative staff. The most important bit of educational professionalism I learned from them was to take ownership of what you are part of and what you do on this campus, because it's what people will remember about you, and it rese- it represents your core values. Ben Bushman taught me that if you make an error, own it, change it, and move on. Marla Weiss, my very first mentor on this campus, taught me that students on this campus expect authenticity and challenging work in the classroom. So be prepared for the toughest questions, and then reply with honesty, even when they stump you. Focus on taking ownership of your work, not blaming others or pushing anything off on someone else. That brings me to this board and school district. In reading the local papers this last week, we as a community did not see examples of taking ownership or responsibility. We read excuses, blaming, self-serving gratuitous ego claims. We need leadership that is fact-based, driven by taking ownership of the good, the bad, and the ugly. I spent the last two weeks researching BHUSD's financial audits. They're all posted online under the business department as audited by Moss, Levy, and Hartzheim. As CSEA has now entered its thirteenth month of negotiations with no end in sight and faced with consistent roadblocks of non-timely answers, late arrivals, and no answers from this board of education, it was on us, the employees, to do this research. To search out budgetary patterns of spending in this district, and then figure out how to make this information easily understandable to the community. So I pulled data from the 2012-13 through the 2017 audits, the years in which BHUSD has been in basic aid funding. The data is actually shocking. And I would like this board and district to take ownership of those facts. In the 2013 audit, this board of education and district spent $2.95 million on administration district-wide. By 2017, the district had raised that spending to $5.75 million. The number of administrators has varied between twenty-one and twenty-four during that same timeframe, but that's a ninety-six percent spending increase for administration costs. That increased the budget by $2.8 million annually. Did the revenues increase that, by that same amount during that timeframe? No. In fact, the revenues only increased by thirty percent. Another area of increased spending occurred in the area of plant services. This is a non-salary spending category. In 2012 and 2013, and for many years previous, the yearly budget was $6.7 million. But by 2017, it had ballooned to $9.7 million. Remember, this is not bond spending, but rather general fund budget spending. That's a forty-one percent increase in spending for a total of $2.8 million. If you're keeping tabs, we're up to $5.6 million. So when the board of education and business department state that the budget is under financial stress due to the salary formula and union contracts, the audits show differently. The facts are in the audits, where anyone can see them just how the district is spending the money, and they're spending it at rapid rates that are unsustainable in two years if the same pattern of spending continues over the next five. It's time for the board of education to take ownership of the fact that they are part of and responsible for the good, the bad, and the ugly. The facts are that the district and the board of education approve spending increases in two areas at such a rapid rate greater than the rate of revenue increases. So stop blaming the formula. It actually keeps spending in direct alignment with revenue gains. Stop blaming employees from ten years ago in a newspaper for things that are happening now that you're embarrassed about. Stop blaming past board members for your act, your inactions and your inability to make ineffective decisions. Take ownership of the past five years or nine. Take ownership of the good, the bad, and the ugly, and then come to the table and negotiate with CSEA in good faith. Our contract expires this June. And again, I remind you, we have been negotiating with you for thirteen months. Thank you.
Well, I hardly know what to say. You've heard me here on nights before, speaking the truth about our lives. I've defended our hard work to you. I've expressed our need, not just for fair, but respectful compensation, and given examples of ways in which you waste our resources and our time for seemingly nothing more than power solely for its own sake. After all of that, there is only this. What you've just experienced is a minute of silence. It is the sound of what you've brought to the bargaining table since unilaterally declaring impasse. Nothing. Now take that minute of silence and multiply it a thousand-fold for our collective future. That silence will be the sound of your classrooms when teachers do not show up early for their days. Will it be the sound of your events when we do not stay late? That silence will fall across our keys and our computers when we are not using them to answer emails and write assessments in the evenings from home. It will become the soundtrack of the 2018-2019 school year. You have your power, and you've been flexing it, trying to strong-arm us into agreement. But teachers are the soul of the district. And I ask you, what good will it do you to gain all the desires of your power but lose us in the process? You are but five voices, debating, arguing, impassing, and imposing on us. But we are four hundred, and collectively, the silence we make will be deafening. If you do not come back to the bargaining table with substantive proposals and ideas, our silence will end up meaning more to this community and its students than all the meaningless words you can muster. And there's always silence before the storm.
Chris Boucher, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, President Korbitov. At the conclusion of my speech today, I've got, uh, hundred-and-fifty copies of all the data that I'm about to share with you in table format for your perusal. Dear members of the Board of Education, public records indicate that on June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, this board approved a twenty percent salary increase for Assistant Superintendent Latonya Kirk-Carter, effective July first, two thousand seventeen, followed up by another increase of nearly five percent, effective July first, two thousand eighteen. And all this time, you've been telling four-hundred-and-fifty rank-and-file staff members that our two-point-something percent raises are breaking the bank. Your ivory tower behavior is hypocritical and demoralizing. Four years ago, four thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-six students were enrolled in our district. Today, three thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine. Four years ago, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine educators were in school sites educating students. Today, two-hundred-and-eighty-four. Four years ago, $2.4 million was spent on twenty-six district office employees. Today, $4.5 million is spent on thirty-six district office employees. The amount spent per educator has increased from eighty-five thousand to one-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars, while the amount spent per, per, per district office employee has increased from ninety-two thousand to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Let's do some more math. Over the last four years, the number of district office employees has increased by thirty-eight percent, while the number of students in our district has decreased by seven percent, and the number of educators has decreased by five percent. Over the last four years, the amount of money spent on district office personnel has increased by eighty-seven percent. Over the last four years, the compensation gap between the average educator and the average district office employee figure has more than doubled from seven thousand per employee to $16,000 per, per employee advantage district office. The district has more money than it knows what to do with. And it's spending lavishly on district office personnel and salaries. And this, of course, creates a fake news story about a budget calamity that you're trying to peddle to this community. Sadly, the losers of your egotistical battle are the students we serve, while your hypocritical actions demoralize the educators who perform the real work of this district. Dark clouds are among us. You have lost your way. You are behaving like petulant, revenge-seeking bosses whose actions only serve to underscore the petty, vindictive, and misguided nature of your decision-making. You're not interested in progress or compromise or fulfilling the district's educational mission or peace. No. You're set on conflict. You're set on war. You're set on crushing us. Your actions make no sense at all to the community, and the community should not stand for it. The students whom we educate deserve a stable environment, not one rocked by your intransigence. Extend an olive branch to us. It's time to cut your losses. Rescind your unilaterally issued impasse declaration and negotiate with four-hundred-and-fifty employees in good faith. Thank you.
Gabby Rodonsky, you have five minutes. And Ms. Chan, Judith Chan, you have five minutes. Molly Peterson, you have three.
Hi, my name is Gabby Rodonsky. I am a third-grade teacher at BV. My career began in this district when I started teaching at Hawthorne in two thousand. Now I am not only a teacher, but also a parent of three BHUSD students and wife of a fellow teacher, now working as an interim administrator. BHUSD is my friends, family, and community. During my career, I felt greatly valued and appreciated as an educator. But recently, and often at this time of year, I do not. This time of year is bittersweet. I got to celebrate my students' accomplishments at open house. Students, parents, and PTAs recognized us during Teacher Appreciation Week with heartfelt notes to gifts, to breakfasts and lunches. Just a few weeks ago, our Apple Award recipients were honored. But more often than not, this time of year feels like May Gray for staff. I find that I am attending board meetings not to share my school's successes or staff's honors or students' accomplishments, but to stand beside my colleagues and fight to be valued and appreciated by our board. Unfortunately, both your words and actions have lacked esteem for your staff. During my career, I've had to stand up and fight because I've been pink-slipped, involuntarily transferred, and had my children placed at different sites. I've attended board meetings and spoken on behalf of colleagues and programs that have been cut, staff layoffs, class size, and salary and benefit negotiations. My family, which include two BHUSD educators, still pay out-of-pocket to cover an HMO for our family. Every year, I walk into a classroom and have a group of parents and students who trust me wholeheartedly with their children's education, growth, and safety for one-hundred-and-eighty days a year. I am dedicated to my profession and the students I teach, as are my colleagues. Most teachers spend five years to become an educator and earn a credential. And then we start with an entry-level salary. To earn more, we must have a graduate degree and take extra units that we pay for, for ourself, by ourselves. And if we ever want to reach the end of the pay schedule, we must work here for twenty-two years, have a master's, and forty-five extra units. I did earn my master's and forty-five extra units. But without the salary formula, I would have been paid the same amount from year nine to fifteen. Then again, at year sixteen, I would finally earn a raise. But without the salary formula, I'd stay the same for another five years. And finally, at year twenty-two, I would top out with a $3,000 raise and, without the salary formula, stay the same until retirement. And I'm one of the lucky ones that has the master's and the forty-five extra units that I could afford to pay. Teachers without the formu- without the salary formula, a teacher without extra classes and a master will top out at nine years. I knew as an educator I would not be rich, but I thought I would be able to afford the cost of living. I hoped that I would feel valued and appreciated, and you would be as committed to me as I am to my profession and to the district. But clearly, you are not. My colleagues and I must continue to fight for a formula that has already been agreed upon and is working like a cola. It feels as if the dark clouds are upon us. I was even on the negotiating team when we, BHEA, the district, and the board, three of you sitting here today, agreed on the salary formula. And I finally thought the fight was done on salary, and we could focus on the business of education. But this year, you wouldn't even negotiate unless we remove the salary formula. Why? The salary formula is based on increased revenue and property tax. Our salary increases only happen if the district gets more money than the previous year. If there is not an increase in revenue, then there is no salary increase. Why do you think property taxes continue to increase? It might have something to do with people moving to Beverly Hills for the schools. I believe that shows our value. You've increased the students in our classes outside the contract numbers, with parents believing in us that we are the best, and we can teach and reach each and every student you put in our classes. You val- value us enough as educators to handle an increase to our class numbers, but not enough to negotiate with us. Even though I commute to and from the valley every day with a car full, oftentimes feeling underappreciated and undervalued, I am not ready to give up on BHUSD, my friends, family, and community. Let your words and actions show that you value your staff, and the impasse come back to the negotiating table. Please do not let May Gray continue and June Gloom come. Show the community that our board values their teachers as much as they and their children do. Thank you.
Judith Chan, you have five minutes.
I have been coming to the last few board meetings since you filed impasse with BHEA. I sat in this room every time watching my amazing colleagues speak passionately, eloquently about the issues we face right now. No matter how well they talked about the facts of the salary formula, the hardship of families who need to pay for dependent care, our low ranking on benefits and salary in the county, and the broken elevator, I am just sick to my stomach to see how the board has shown absolutely no response or action to anything that we say. Instead, you send an email to all the parents to distort the truth about the situation and portray the teachers to be greedy, asking for an unreasonable amount of salary increase, eighteen percent. I think by now, most parents know that was a lie. That six percent raise for three years was a counteroffer, not what we asked for in the first place. We are asking for less than what you offer. We want to keep the formula because without it, we know we will get zero for many years. And that's what happened in the past. Besides the lies, then Ms. Korbitov, one time in the meeting, asked us whether we enjoyed the song "I Won't Back Down" by Tom Patti. Were you trying to be funny? What have the teachers done that makes you think that we should be treated with this kind of disrespect? Now, I know you're gonna say that the board is not supposed to respond, regardless of what people say in the public comments. There is some sort of rule about that. However, that is not true. Apparently, you can choose to comment if you want to. In one of the recent board meetings, we had a parent here complaining about her child who got very sick in a field trip. And immediately after she talked, the board commented. Not only they assured the parent that we're gonna do something about this, you gave directions to Dr. Bregge to come up with some policy. directions to Dr. Breggy to come up with some policy. Now, I don't know whether that policy has already been written up, but it was nice for you to say that to the parent because she felt that you hurt her. But for us, nothing. Not even like, "Don't worry, we'll work this out, we hear you," or "Let's go back and start negotiating for real," or "Tell Kalen's daughter we are so sorry that we could not fix the stupid elevator." Nothing. Instead, during Teacher Appreciation Week, you gave us a piece of paper and passed a resolution to say you really appreciate your teachers in this district. That was a slap on our face. I have been here for 17 years, and Dr. Breggy has to be either the eighth or the ninth superintendent I have had. Anyone ever wonder why a superintendent cannot stay here for too long? We saw over and over again how the school board used top-down management style to govern the district. Whose idea it is to file impasse with BHGA? Is it from the superintendent or the school board? Just like what Gabby said, three of you were on the board when the formula was established, and it was established for a good reason. Why are you suddenly fighting with us about this? Why are you not willing to work this out with the union? Why? The teachers are very angry right now. Some of them won't come to this meeting, not because they don't care, but because they don't have the stomach to sit through it. One of my colleagues told me, she came, she couldn't sleep after that. She was so angry, so upset. We are so fed up with how we are ignored and disrespected. This impasse needs to end right now. The district has never truly negotiated with the union since the get-go. You just want to impose us a contract, and the only thing you care about is to get rid of the formula at all costs. This is about control. You want to spend money in whatever way you want, and you do not care about what your teachers say and think. The school district is only functioning because you have teachers who walk into the classroom every day to do the actual teaching. What kind of school board are you to show the community that you don't care about your teachers? There are dark clouds ahead of all of us. Honestly, I am not hopeful that you will change at all. I'm not holding my breath, but the teachers will continue to fight.
Molly Peterson, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I have a short speech. This may go down as the longest goodbye in history. I think the last time I was here, I said goodbye and cried and did all kinds of things. I don't think I'll cry tonight. It's tragic that, as I stand here at the last official board meeting of my tenure as a student, as a student, as a teacher here in Beverly Hills, that there are black crowds overhead that threaten to dump acid upon us. I have three things that I want you to ponder, to think about, to ruminate on as you go on about your business as the school board and as I head off into the sunset. First, every single decision that you make must be made with one item in mind, and that is the students. Every school board member, every administrator, every teacher, the decisions we make from moment to moment having to do with education here in BHUSD must have the students first and foremost. It cannot, those decisions cannot be ruled by ego, by popularity, by power, but must be ruled by the students. Number two, be proactive, not reactive. There had been a plan to put a fence in front of the high school for years, but because the community pushed back, it wasn't attractive, it wasn't what we're used to, it never came to fruition until horrible things happened, and suddenly it was a crisis and we needed that fence right now. Reaction. You were planning, you developed the Future Focus Schools Team, who came to you with a recommendation along with the administration. You did not have the courage to make the hard decision because the community pushed back. Reactive, not proactive. And number three, not a single one of the staff, not the superintendent, not the administrators, not the teachers, we did not hire ourselves. We sent an application in, we applied, but we didn't hire us. Trust the people you hired to do the job you hired them to do. We are competent, we are capable, and we can do that. Trust your administration, trust your teachers, and do it with not words, but action. Show us, demonstrate it. Change the morale that has created this huge black cloud over this district into sunshine again. Make us who we were meant to be.
Sharon Kirkpatrick, time seated by Carol Cornia, you have five minutes. Telly C., time seated by Preston Joseph, you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community, colleagues, and friends. My name is Sharon Kirkpatrick, and I recently had to make the very difficult and very painful decision to leave Beverly for the sake of my own sanity. Teaching has been an amazing second career for me, one in which I've been able to build on my previous experience to provide what I hope has been a solid education to the students I've had the privilege of working with. I was really excited to attain a position here in Beverly Hills nine years ago because I believed that Beverly Hills was a community that shared my belief that there is no higher priority than the education and emotional well-being of our children and the promise for their future. At Hawthorne, El Rodeo, and then Beverly, I enjoyed coming to work every day. I drove home at night happy with the progress I could see my students making. I've made friends, developed strong collaborative relationships with my colleagues, solid relationships with parents, and I used to feel that the administration and you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, had my back. Unfortunately, that's changed. Stop the clock, please. Unfortunately, that has changed. I can't trust you anymore. You agree to things, then change your minds. You make offers, then rescind them. You make promises, and then you go back on them. I stood here last year, asking you not to cut instructional assistant hours because I was already well over the class side that could even remotely be considered small group instruction under special education law. I was given assurances the problem would be fixed, and this year would be different. Less than one hour into the first day of school, you cut my IA support in half. The beginning of this semester, you tried to cut it by another third. Add to that that I finally stopped purchasing my own classroom supplies out of my own pocket because it was getting out of hand. It's been really demoralizing to see how my students' grades have slipped, especially when Gen Ed teachers are being applauded for using some of the same techniques that I can no longer provide to my students because I can't get simple things like colored paper, glue sticks, or highlighters. I know you don't care about me, but I do know you care about your pocketbook. You need to clean up your act fast before the lawsuits over FAPES start coming in. Attendance, discipline, and security have become jokes in this district. Students can attend class if and when they feel like it, and nothing is done except to demand that I develop makeup work for them. Students have thrown furniture across the room shouting racist expletives, and they get lunchtime cleanup as a discipline. Last year, after three calls to security for help, I was assaulted by a student in my classroom, denied any voice in his suspension hearings, notified after the fact that he was coming back to school, and then I was blackmailed into giving him a passing grade in a class that he was already failing. Just a few weeks ago, with all these new fancy security measures in place, I was catching up on some special ed paperwork after school, which every other district in our Selpa gives an extra prep period for. But anyway, there was this strange man wandering around the village that scared me enough I locked myself in my room. I called for security. I tried three different numbers. Nothing. I no longer feel safe, much less supported in my classroom. I tell you these few stories not because I think you care, but because I am certain that I am not alone in my disillusionment and my frustration. I love what I do. I'm a good teacher. I get students others give up on, the ones who aren't expected to live through or graduate from high school, much less go to college. Some of those students are at SC, UCLA, Arizona, San Francisco, Boston College, Otis, I even have one at the University of Bangkok. I'm very proud of what my students have accomplished. I'm also proud of my colleagues. They are smart, caring, gifted professionals who dedicate their lives to your children's future. Still, you continue to insult us by telling us that we do not deserve a competitive salary structure or adequate health care, that we are not worth what teachers in most other Southern California districts are worth. My colleagues are an amazing group of people. They go above and beyond on a daily basis. I wish I had their physical and emotional resilience to continue to put up with your garbage. I really want to use another word, but I want to provide a positive example to my students, something I wish you would do. Please, stop the lies, stop the games. You're going to lose more incredible teachers unless you sit down, make an effort, and make your priority what ours is, a first-class education and a promising future for our children.
Telly C., you have five minutes, then Marla Weiss, you have five minutes.
Dear members of the Board of Education and District Administration, this is the final time this school year our members are here to ask you to work with us. There are two paths ahead of us as a district, one that brings us back to a partnership and one with dark clouds ahead, foreshadowing a drastically different relationship between the district and its educators to start the next school year. Currently, the district finds itself at odds with the city regarding metro. It is at odds with its students and community regarding the reconfiguration of schools. It is at odds with CSEA and its personnel decisions and with negotiations. The district has disrespected its two classified units at the bargaining table by being unprepared and possibly engaging in regressive bargaining. And of course, the district is at odds with its teachers by imposing a bargaining impasse with us to take away what is a sustainable and modest annual salary increase. In place, you have a proposal that will actually cost the district millions of dollars more. That's seven different groups that you are in conflict with. There is an image that comes to mind when we think of this current situation. It is of two people sitting on a slowly sinking ship. Let's give these people names, the district and Beverly. There had been an arrangement and a relationship for years. Sometimes the district got her way, and sometimes Beverly got her way, but the two always worked together to keep this boat moving. And for the longest time, the district controlled all the new money that came into this ship, and Beverly had to negotiate to get a share of it. Then one day, the district and Beverly came up with a brilliant idea. Let's make an agreement that when new money comes in, both people would get a certain percentage. And new money always came in. No need to fight, no need to negotiate, more time to work together on how to fix this boat for good. It was a brilliant idea that worked and continues to work, but years passed, and the district literally had a change of heart and said, "You know what? You can't have any more money. I need all of the money to fix the boat, but without your input." But the district spends frivolously. She gets a brand-new communication system, hires an entourage, claims that an agreement with the city will not happen unless Beverly gives up the money now. Meanwhile, cracks, mostly caused by the district, are developing on the boat. Each attempt by the district to fix the cracks just creates several more. Even a simple elevator cannot be counted on to work. A group of the district's friends puts together a plan on how to fix the boat despite all that spending. The plan is rejected, and the district goes on to say, "I'm going to put together a new group of friends and make a new plan." Meanwhile, Beverly continues to try to work with the district, but the district is too intoxicated with pride and says, "I want to control the money. I will not work with you. I will respond when you, I will not respond when you speak with me. I will disagree with you on everything." But here is a resolution that says how much we appreciate you. There comes a time when a person who is mistreated and ignored says enough is enough. We do not need a resolution on a piece of paper. We do not need words promising a better tomorrow. What we demand is that the district resolve to act with the best interest of its students, its community, and their staff, to negotiate in good faith, to listen to our concerns, to make students, community, and staff a priority, to sober up and stop acting like drunken sailors on a sinking ship. When this happens, if this happens, then this resolution will mean something. But until then, these are just empty words, and we, the educators of this district, simply cannot accept it, and so we are returning it. There are two paths ahead for us as a district, one of partnership and one of darkness. What path will we be on when we return in August? We are ready, and always have been ready, to work with you. What happens next is entirely up to you.
You have five minutes.
I know, I never intended on the higher amount, by the way. Dear members of the Board of Education, District Administration, and members of the audience, especially my esteemed colleagues, the professional teaching and support staff that are the foundation of this district. I started my speech last month the same way, addressing my esteemed colleagues in the room and at home watching the board meeting. You all know I'm an advocate for this district. I want to share why I believe in this district and the education that takes place. While board members, district, and site administration come and go, and while construction may or may not happen, there was one thing for certain about this district, the invaluable professional, well-educated, and masterful teaching and support staff. Why are students getting into so many elite colleges and universities? It's their hard work inside and outside the classroom, as well as the excellent education they receive by the teaching staff. Why are 14 of the top 20 GPAs in this 2018 graduating class student athletes? It's the coaching, teaching, and support staff. Why are our students constantly improving year after year on the S-Back exams? It's our teaching and support staff. The number-one criteria for a California Distinguished School honor is student performance. Why is our high school a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, a New American High School, and a California Distinguished School? It's the teaching and support staff. Why have all four of our district K8 schools been named California Distinguished Schools? It's the teaching and support staff. Parents, site administration, and district administration share with us, the teaching staff, about the excellence that goes on in the classroom. The excellence in the classroom is the foundation of this district. This is the precious resource that needs to be embraced and supported by the district, meaning you, the Board of Education. Do you know what countless teachers, do you know that countless teachers work in their classrooms and at home on the weekends? Do you know that teachers like Kristi Fuhrer work Saturdays and Sundays in their classrooms in preparation for open house? And if you walked into those classrooms on open house, you would be awed at the hard work and dedication of these teachers to showcase what their students have accomplished during the year. Do you know that high school teachers like Joni Garrett and Dan Morica have taken for years their AP US History students to Greystone Mansion on the weekends to learn about the local history of Beverly Hills? And speaking of AP classes, do you know that numerous AP teachers work with their students on the weekends for unpaid review sessions? Do you know that our teachers attend district-wide events at all campuses to support the students in the district? Teachers like Michelle Stratford at Horace Mann attend BHUSD and non-BHUSD-sponsored events, such as sporting events and theater arts performances, in support of her students. Do you know that Julie Gohler has single-handedly implemented the Hero Project? Students, teachers, and families read and discuss an inspirational book. Not only is the entire school community reading together, but there's cross-curricular discussions taking place in English, in history, and often math and science classrooms. She even managed to bring Louis Zamperini to the high school when the Hero Project book Unbroken was read, Unbroken, written by Laura Helen Brown. Do you know that Katina Valens spends hours of extra time with her beginning instrumental music students at Beverly Vista? She meets to work with them on reading music, listening and performing music, and going with them to outside concerts, all on her own time. At El Rodeo, Lindsay Holberg runs the Be Kind Club, motivating her students that it's cool to be kind. Each year, Corinne Carlson and Irina Cashper put on the French Culture Club Celebration Cabaret, working with their students on performance and cultural activities and presentations. These are only a few examples of the tireless efforts of our professional staff. These are additional educational moments that the teachers are not contractually obligated to. Every year, the administrations at our school tell us, "It is you that makes the school great." We are great, but we're not being respected or treated that way. Sit down at the bargaining table. Leave the formula alone. Pay us what we have earned and deserve. Give us the benefits package that will keep our young, amazing teachers working here. Because when you lose the teaching staff, you lose the quality of education that our district and the community expects and deserves. This district offers a high-quality education. We have high-quality academics and extracurriculars. Why? Because of the high-quality teaching and support staff. There are dark clouds ahead. Let's clear the skies and do what's right.
Amy Arabello, you have five minutes. Time seated by Darren Herman and Janine Erickson, but you have five minutes. There's a name here, Lisa, I don't have a last name. Okay, thank you. Time seated by Kim Term, and those are the last two. Jackie Kruger, you have three minutes. Okay. Ms. Arabello, you have five minutes.
Time's up, BHUSD. That shouldn't startle anyone. We've all been hidden behind this facade long enough, but like any false front, the truth is going to come out. I've been inside these buildings for more than 30 years. I was educated in these walls, and I've given back for 20 years because I believe in the fundamentals of public education and the values of this small community. So with all due respect, oh, there is no longer any respect to do. Mel, Lisa, Isabel, Michael, Luke, I've sat in much more private settings with all of you, where I've looked each of you in the eyes and implored you to do something about the dangers that pervade the El Rodeo campus. You've condoned sexual harassment, as your attorney stated in writing. It's okay to hug someone even if they don't want to be hugged. It's okay to harass staff, to allow staff to work in fear of retaliation. I stood in front of all of you, and I stood for 14 teachers who needed you to hear, and you did not listen. You have lost some of the finest teachers because of your collusion. They left the district under the guise of early retirement, permanent leaves. We've even lost their vast talents to LAUSD. Many of us had to leave El Rodeo. It was not a choice that we had to leave El Rodeo. It was our only lifeline. In the past month, numerous teachers have called on you, Luke, in HR, to beg you to help them get away from El Rodeo. I have had half a dozen teachers reach out directly to me as the K5 Director of BHGA, but they won't come to you now for fear of retribution. They fear, and I quote, "I'm not going to let happen to me what happened to Darren Herman and Amy Arabello." You all know about this, and you all have let it continue. For what? For high test scores? Transparency is synonymous with truth. Each of you have uttered at some point in your careers that you- Each of you have uttered at some point in your careers that you wish for this district's procedures to be transparent. But lies and distortions refute that transparency, so that what we are is an opaque edifice of deceit. We can transform our landscaping, we can put up cameras, we can put up security guards at each entry point, but the evil is intrinsic and it's pervasive. We cannot tout kindness campaigns. We'll do it, but if we have administration that is vengeful and dishonest, we can't expect our students to learn empathy nor to feel safe. You're spending more than half a million dollars a year now to protect our children. But we need to protect them from themselves. We need to give them the tools to be mentally cognizant of empathy and understanding. Teach them all character education. Don't take it away like you've done. Don't just teach a few girls to tell boys to be kind. A half a million dollars can teach a lot. It can help a lot. Don't just create a facade with it. Your claim that the district employs interest-based bargaining is just another facade. You haven't listened. You haven't heard. You have not compromised. You filed impasse on BHEA, and once we finish mediating, you'll likely impose a change to our contract and take away that salary formula. It looks good to say we utilize interest-based bargaining, doesn't it? But it's just another facade. I'm going to be done shortly and leave. I have a shiva call to make. Yeah. You know, your teachers have a life outside of our classroom walls. We have our own children to raise. We have elderly parents to care for. We have long commutes to and from school. We have parents of our students whom we like to confer with once the children have gone to sleep. Yet, a board member that sits here sometimes had the gall to state that we teachers don't stay long enough at a board meeting to understand the financials. This year, I personally have stayed many nights, well past public comment, to glean some understanding about the fiscal promise of Beverly Hills Unified School District. I have heard dissenting opinions of where we're at. I've seen board members ignore the facts as they stare at their cellphones. I've watched you all argue with one another in a way that is disgraceful for adults who should be role models of a community. I've seen you eye-roll and mop community members who've tried to find a way to make this place better. But I have yet to hear a clear, concise state of the finances. So before I leave, I'm going to ask you to show us a modicum of respect and gratitude, to believe in us and what we do. There are dark clouds ahead. You've taken all the blood from us. Some of your administrators have tried to take our souls. Please do not take our salary formula from us, too. Hear us. Please listen.
Lisa, is that you? Jackie, that's Jackie, right. All right. There you are. Thank you. Lisa is at -- one moment. No, she's at five.
Thank you. I wanted to start with a quote, "The greatest gift you can give another is the purity of your attention," by Richard Moss. I hope that while I and we are all speaking tonight and sharing our truths, all of you will give us your full attention, without texting or looking away. I'm quite sure that you would feel more than disrespected if I texted or fell asleep at my desk while I was supposed to be educating our children. My name is Lisa Palmigiano, and I have been an educator for 26 years, 22 years proudly teaching second grade at Hawthorne School. In my 22 years in the Beverly Hills Unified School District, this is only the second time I have spoken at a school board meeting. I am moved to do so because of the importance of the issues facing our district, including teacher salaries and the need for a designated middle school. I feel the need to stand up to what is an environment of dishonesty and bad faith, not only in our school community, but in our world today. For the last several years in my second-grade class, as part of our social studies curriculum, the students pick a person who made a difference in the world, and read that person's biography, and then write a research report on that person. I model this social studies writing project by reading aloud the story Chocolate by Hershey, which is the story of Milton Hershey and how he became a person who made a difference in the world by not only inventing delicious-tasting chocolate treats, but by being a philanthropist and building a school for orphaned children amongst many other good deeds. This spring, as I was reading the story, I began to make some insightful text-to-world connections, as good critical thinkers and readers do, between Milton Hershey and the situation Beverly Hills Unified finds itself in with teacher salaries and the need for a designated middle school amongst other things. Here it is. Milton Hershey had a passion for making candy. He pursued his passion with perseverance, integrity, and vision. There were many obstacles he had to overcome, not the least of which were financial ones. However, his first major success was as a caramel maker. In his effort to understand how his caramels were being sold in England, he discovered at a garden party that the children were licking the chocolate off the confections and spitting out the centers. They didn't care what was in the center, they loved the chocolate. So Milton expanded his vision. He sold his successful caramel company and focused on making chocolate for children. And here's where it gets interesting. The year was 1900. Most people thought Milton was crazy, but most people did not have his vision. As part of his vision, Milton would build a chocolate factory in a cornfield. Surrounding the factory, he built an entire town for his employees to live in. He ran trolley lines to nearby towns so workers could live elsewhere if they wanted to. Milton told his architect not to make the houses all alike and to give each one a garden. He made sure they were reasonably priced so his workers could own their own homes. The town needed more than just houses, so he built schools, churches, banks, stores, an amusement park, golf courses, a zoo, a dancing pavilion, and an outdoor theater. Milton wanted his workers to be happy. He knew that in order to have a good workforce, he needed to treat his employees generously. In the 1930s, during the Depression, Milton had a plan to make sure no workers would lose their jobs. He put his employees to work on improvement projects in the city of Hershey. All of this construction took care of the workers, and although work hours were reduced, no jobs were lost. Again, Milton wanted his workers to be happy. He knew that in order to have a good workforce, he needed to treat his employees generously. I implore this school board to expand its vision for our district. Caramels are good, but most people would say chocolate is even better. Pursue our vision with perseverance, integrity, that means in good faith, and nurture your most important stakeholders in this vision: us, the teachers, who nurture our most precious gift, the children. Treat us with dignity and respect, and give us what we need in order to truly make our district a lighthouse of excellence. I end with this: When in the dark, is it better to move or stand still? If still, you won't bump into anything, but you won't find the light either.
Jackie Kruger, you have three minutes. Thank you.
It's hard for me to follow the beautiful, eloquent, and prepared educators that all have been speaking, that are educating our precious, caring children. I'm a parent of three children at Beverly Vista, currently second grade, third grade, and fifth grade, and I'm here because I just want the very best for our schools. And I want the best teachers, the most inspired teachers, those who will want to add and to add to the programs that we already have. I want a teacher that will supervise a sixth-grade trip to Astro Camp. I want a teacher to teach an extra mathlete's class. I want more for our schools. And I'm standing here with the utmost respect for the board members and everybody's here. A lot of you I know personally, and I know that you want the best for our children as well. But I implore you to understand that what's the best for our kids is what's best for our teachers, and to have the best teachers that want to give and provide more. I wanted to talk a little bit about our class sizes, which was something that I've spoke about, or I didn't speak about, I helped rally for in the past. When I came to the school district with my children, the class sizes were 20 to 1, K through 3. And when there was a board meeting about the possibility of increasing class size, I thought that the conclusion of it all was that even though the number somehow was raised to 23, we wouldn't ever have more than 20. But immediately after that, I think it was the next day, my kindergarten class had the 21st person in it at Beverly Vista, and now my currently second-grade daughter, when she was in first grade, had a 23 class size. This year, she's in second grade, she has a 23 class size. And I definitely see that it is so much harder for the teachers to teach and for her to gain as much from that class as my fifth grader did when she was in it and my third grader did when he was in it. I want to make sure that we are spending for our kids today, not saving for some future generation of kids, because I want my kids that I'm working so hard and contributing so much to the school to benefit from it. I'm just looking at all of these educators who are amazing, amazing people that I love and respect personally, that came here in the collective amount of time they spent preparing for today and speaking today and sitting through this meeting, if they didn't have to be here today, but rather with our children, giving to our teacher, how much more our school could be. And I want to say that I mean, I don't know if any other parents spoke today, but it just, the only reason that many of them haven't is that it's probably the worst time of year for parents to get away with these school performances tonight and with all these graduations and everything else. I'm certain that if it wasn't for that, I probably am speaking on behalf of my entire classes in my Beverly Vista school. I just want all of you to consider a way to tie our teacher's salary with our property values, and let's pay our teachers the right amount. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. We're on -- Thank you. Away to the music's off, please. Okay. Thank you. Dr. Bregge, do you want to leave the balloons up? No way to get them down? All right, I'm just, it's, I just don't want them to pop from the heat. Excuse me? All right, I'm just mentioning it. Okay, we're on to staff presentations. Measure E Bond Building Fund Financial Audit, Moss Levy.
Thank you, President Korvatov. We have Hadley Yui from our auditing firm, Moss Levy, to present you the highlights from the Measure E --
Kurt Carter, can you hold on a moment? Can we close the door until the hallways are emptier? It's hard to hear. Thank you. Yeah, close the doors. Thank you. We can open them again when it's quieter. All right, thank you. You have the floor, Latonya.
Thank you. You all are familiar with Mr. Yui. He's our auditor for our general fund, and this year, with the agreement of the CLC Audit Committee, we brought Moss Levy on to do the Measure E financial audit. We figured, we thought it would be a better audit since they already do our general fund finances. He's here to just give you the highlights of the audit and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Welcome.
Should I start? Okay. Okay, good evening. I'm here to present the Measure E bond audit, and this is just only the district building fund. And this is for the fiscal year 1617, actually. It's for June 30th and 2017. So we did our financial audit portion, and there's another auditor doing the performance audit. For the 16 --
I'm sorry, can you put the mic up a little closer, too? You could raise it. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear? Okay. For the 1617 audit of the building fund, we render a modified opinion, which is like a clean opinion, the best opinion the auditing may receive from outside auditor. And basically, at the end of the year, there were about $185 million, $86 million in cash with the county and left to spend for the various capital project. And during the year, there were additional $140 million bond issue during the year. Basically, expenditure is about $45 million was spent in 1617. And the finding that, the observation that we render is same as the performance audit, and I think we already go over like the previous meeting. Is there any question?
Are there any questions?
Mr. Spitz, do you have any questions? Mr. Goldstein?
No.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay.
So the audit is just for information and for you to accept?
Okay, so do you want to do a roll call to accept it, or just all in favor? All in favor? Aye. Abstentions? Noes?
We need to move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to move to approve. My apologies. Okay. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the Measure E Bond Building Fund of Beverly Hills Unified School District Financial Audit Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017.
Okay, move by Mr. Goldstein and seconded by Mr. Spitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Noes? It's a 3-0. Ms. Hacker and Mr. Margot are not here. Thank you. Okay, Google email migration. So I, you want to make a motion, I guess, Mr. Goldstein? Or you want to just go through the PowerPoint and then?
Should we have the presentation?
Okay, we'll have the presentation first.
Okay, great. Use the clicker, Josh. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam President and Board Members. May I launch right in? Okay, so Dr. Bregge, did you want to make a comment at all, just go into the presentation? Okay.
I'll wait until the end.
Okay. So Dr. Bregge shared with Board Members that we are looking to switch to Google Mail instead of Microsoft Exchange in support of a collaborative work environment. I'm going to be very succinct, because there were questions presented to us, and we want to make sure we have enough time to discuss. What is meant by the switch to Google? Are we keeping any of the Microsoft suite? The switch is only includes retiring the Microsoft Exchange email server, which means basically Microsoft Exchange email will -- basically, Microsoft Exchange email will sunset and we will solely move to Google Mail. Outlook email client will no longer be supported as the official district email. So that's an important distinction. After the switch, users can simply use any browser to access their emails going forward as you would for your Gmail personal account. And the district will still continue to use all other Microsoft products, including Microsoft Office, better known to most people as Word, PowerPoint, Excel. When are we planning to make the switch? The original hope was that transitioning the last week of school. Are we not already using Google? How is what we have been doing any different than what we already, what's being proposed different from what we already have? Our current state is that we use both Exchange, Outlook. And for those of you who may not know what Exchange is, it's an Exchange server, Microsoft Exchange, so it's Outlook and Google. So, right now, we have access to both. The new direction would be retire the Exchange server, Outlook server, and move all our accounts to Google, switching to BHUSD, I mean, switching to Google but keeping our BHUSD.org, not having to go to .com. Currently, our current state is that we have BHUSD.org, which is our Exchange extension, and we have .com, which is our Google. How are we addressing student privacy and safety? Google for Education, as many of you know, is an international solution. It is compliant with SIPA, COPA, FERPA, and SOPIPA. So is there a cost benefit to this migration? It's cost neutral. There is a cost of $7,000 to $15,000 to do the migration, a one-time cost. The operational cost of the migration is neutral again. What are some of the benefits and drawbacks of going to be an all-Google district in terms of email? I think you all can see it listed there. I don't want to belabor the point, but overall, the benefits include that Google is highly intuitive. Many people use it in their personal and professional lives. The Google Suite does what is congruent with the instructional piece that we use in the district. Our students and teachers, by the day, are becoming more and more deft at using the Google Suite. Google does offer exceptional spam filtering. That's a really important thing for email users, as many of us know. And then Gmail, of course, integrates with all the Google apps, including Doc, Sheets, Slides, et cetera. Possible challenges, the change management piece, as with any changes, isn't particular to Google. We would have to support stakeholders and users in the migration. Some would consider the migration cost a challenge. Facilitating professional development goes with change management. These are all things that happen when we have any switch or any change, so that's not unusual at all. There is more limited legal discovery under Google, just because the server is not our own. Business user efficiency is grounded in Microsoft. That's true for most businesses. Also manageable. User data solely housed on the Google service. That's connected back to limited legal discovery. So I'd like to pause here for questions and answers, if the Board Members have any. Dr. Brege, did you want to comment before that?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about the switch. School districts across the country are moving from their very traditional, if they're not already at Gmail, they are moving towards that way. We're asking students and we're asking our staff, this is in the audit as well, to do more information sharing and collaboration. And that is intuitively based in the work that we're trying to do through Google Docs and Google Sheets and that type of sharing. The unlimited storage is a very important piece, as well as the Google Calendar as well. I know that emails, after a length of time, they fall off of Microsoft Office. It's a very limited search feature. And we're finding that it is, it's an easier system, albeit, any change is going to be difficult for staff, but that our students and our staff are starting to work in a lot of these documents that are a lot easier for sharing. Just as an example, today, working with somebody with a PowerPoint presentation. We can still have PowerPoint available, but there was back and forth today with several staff members on what changes did you make, whereas if this was done in the Google Suites, that this would have been a much more efficient process. So, we're happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the switch.
So, Mr. Goldstein? Or no, I think Mr. Spitz? Or Jonathan?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I really have no questions. I have, I have great faith that the decision has been carefully, based on careful research, and I'm satisfied that it will be an improvement for us. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, I have a number of questions and some concerns. So, Google email is cloud-based, correct?
It is, Mr. Goldstein.
So, we don't actually, obviously, then, we don't actually have the servers behind us. It goes off to Google and to their server farms, wherever they may be. You list a number of challenges, and you say change management. What is that referring to?
So, change management, we've applied it to most of the initiatives we had, and it's a natural process with any change. It includes ensuring that we message to our stakeholders what the change is, that we well prepare them for it. The good news is that, as Dr. Brege shared, the Google Application Suite is something that our stakeholders are already using, especially instructionally. The business side may need a little more support. That's just normal and natural. That's nothing to shy away from. The professional development piece, again, the PD has already been going on for our teachers and our site administrators, so that would not be a new thing. We may have to laser in on some of our business classified staff, who is more used to using the Microsoft Exchange for business function.
So, I'm aware that students and teachers have been using Google for quite some time, and it's been a push, at least at the high school, and I think it's now migrating down to the Ks as well, for collaborative projects, which I think it's a perfect platform for. For a school district, you know, we're talking email, essentially.
Yes.
And let me ask you this, we have a number of different departments with regard to it, and my big concern is the limited legal discovery aspect when you have cloud-based emails for a business. We don't have control over some of those aspects, such that if, I would assume that, let's say, not picking on any department here, but they're sitting right here, so our construction department, construction facilities, they would go, then migrate as well onto this Google platform.
Yes, the entire district would.
Right. So whether it's maintenance operation, construction, what concerns me, and maybe I'm putting on my attorney hat to some degree, we just had a court decision in Christiansen. The biggest aspect of that, and I sat on the CLC during the time, just after that occurred, I was appointed to the CLC, and that's when Ms. Kirk Carter came on as part of the investigations. One of the things that the district did that was very smart is they were able to get their hands on strategic concepts, servers, and emails, because they were using theirs, although the district had provided them with that. Without that information, I don't think we'd be sitting here today. I think we'd be sitting on a $23 million verdict. That would have been upheld, it may have been upheld. My concern, not to say that we're going to have that type of, those type of issues, but day in, day out, we have heard it and we've seen it in this district with regard. And it's not so much your department, but it's a concern when you deal with harassment complaints or inappropriate conduct. And I know this is a lot of negative aspects I'm bringing up. I understand the positive that you're trying to bring with this. My concern is, is if we don't have control, if something occurs in our councils here, and I, you know, it's something when you put a limited legal discovery, I started thinking about all the laws that are out there and all the protections that occurs when people put information, whether you work at a business or not, it's a whole different animal to a large extent. And that gives me a lot of pause. And I would like to see some legal looped into this. I'm not trying to drum up work for attorneys here, but I think it's crucially important that we know what are true limitations on our own information when produced by our teachers or administrators. Not to say that I anticipate anything being done inappropriately in the future, but let's face it, we're a school district, and things happen. And sometimes you need access to that information. We would have to, my general understanding on this, I would like some additional position with regard to legal on this, from the standpoint of, if we have to access that information, we can't just access it. It's not ours, we have to go through Google. They can say no. And then that brings up all kinds of other issues. And I know it sounds like a roadblock to go into the system. What type, has this been looked at? Has this been vetted out through council?
I mean, I know. We can bring back, we'll absolutely bring that back to you, but the school districts would not move to Gmail if they could not do searches. You know, just in my former district that had Gmail, we, it was actually, the search feature is so much better than what even Outlook is, that we could, we did searches for, like, for PRA requests, we were able to get any content that we wanted from Gmail. So, it's not that we can't do that. There are different settings that the district administration has to retrieve that information.
Well, that's not my primary concern. My primary concern would be what we can actually access in certain situations. And I know councils here, and I don't want to put them on the spot, because I don't believe you're here for this, unless you are. But are you able to speak to any aspect of this?
We have a specialist in our office who does this. He works with subpoenas associated with different servers and services. Generally, Google is very good with your own information. You can actually ask them to prepare information for you. We also have seen that generally, if somebody comes and tries to make a third-party subpoena, there's a consent piece to it. If I recall correctly, it has to be done a certain way. What I can do is I can put our specialist in touch with the folks here, so that it could be dealt with a little bit more clearly, rather than just kind of an ad hoc, my understanding is. So, I can give you a little bit. It's generally pretty, it's generally pretty easy for the school district to access their own information.
So, I have some background with regard to e-discovery. Still have the crossover and how it applies with regard to school districts, and so that's why I bring up that concern.
Yeah.
It's something I would like to see.
So, what I'll do is I'll have our person, Scott Sacks, prepare some information and probably talk, and I know that you have some background in it, too, so.
Yeah, I would like to be very much involved in that, because we've never had to, in my experience, ever have to go through Google, ever, to get any of our own information from our own employees and students, ever.
So, but if I may ask a question on that matter. The Karen Christiansen affair, she was not, she was an employee, then she morphed into a consultant, but she was using our server. How would that case have applied if it had been Gmail, Terry? Because we were able to retrieve everything that she didn't think we would ever see on those servers, because we own the server. We wouldn't own the Google server.
My concern is we have outside, not trying to pick on the construction department that is just sitting right here, and it's an outside contractor, not an employee of the district.
We have done actually the same thing with even, with various people who are on the same server, and been able to go to Google and ask for them to produce documents. So I think that that might be something that would be better served offline. What I can do is I can have somebody prepare that information. But it's generally not a problem. I would imagine that the district would keep on their servers a certain amount of, or their files and computers, a certain amount of information also.
I would be more comfortable having it worked up a little bit. Not to create work, but I would really want to know that we have access to consultants, outside contractors.
But Terry, what would happen?
I also want to ask, and it's not a legal question, it's a timing question. So this is coming to us at the end of the year. Is this something that has to be instituted immediately to get it up and running at a certain point in time, or just you have all the pieces together, so you bring it in front of the board?
Well, we just want to make sure that we've got time over the summer to ensure that we're able to look at the Microsoft emails, capture them, because people are going to want to have them and refer back to them. We want to keep those available. We want to be able to provide training videos for people. You know, it's not a very difficult system to learn, but we want to have time over the summer to prepare that information for staff.
And then, those PDs will occur late summer, as teachers come back to class and come back to work in August.
Okay.
So, as I said, the bottom line is, there's not, there's not something you need done today to implement, potentially implement this for August.
Well, for some of the migration pieces, we need to get started on those.
Yeah, we would need to know that it's happening, so we could plan for, back map from an August start.
Mr. Margot?
Now, Mr. Goldstein asked the question I was asking, albeit a lot more in detail. So, looking at the transmittal, though, is this an actionable item? And there's no...
It's really just discussion and direction.
So, I think pursuant to just answering Mr. Goldstein's question, I have no issue with this. I know the current system is not the most effective, so.
Okay. You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. I might have missed this. How old is our current Exchange server?
Approximately 10 years old, is what I'm talking.
So, can it be upgraded? Is it going to, I mean, was it supposed to be upgraded?
It can be upgraded. Now, for this reason, we asked Mr. Talbert to come. He's our senior network administrator, systems administrator, forgive me, and our IT project manager. So since we're going a little more granular with IT, I'm going to ask him to come down and talk about the server, if that's okay.
Thank you, yeah, I'm trying to understand. Okay. Hi, Mr. Talbert.
Hello, Board Member Korbatov.
Thanks for being here. And I would like to know, this is a 10-year-old server.
Correct.
So what does it take to upgrade it? Or change it, or whatever?
So, we actually have the components to upgrade. We actually bought that probably about a year ago. And we actually had a plan of action, actually upgrade the system to the most current version of Exchange. I think, Dr. Brege, he wanted to take a different path of going with Google, so since then, we haven't actually moved forward with that.
So would a new upgraded server allow everyone to send bigger attachments?
Yes, correct.
So the upgrade problem would get fixed with a new server?
Correct.
Or an upgraded server? I don't want to say new.
Attachment-wise, if it's the attachments, that's an issue, then yes, upgraded server would fix that problem, correct?
And how much did we spend on whatever you did to make sure this would upgrade?
The hardware that we purchased, we spent approximately about $15,000 on the hardware.
So, I know that some in this district want to use Mac and some want to use Microsoft, correct? Okay. If you upgrade the server, could the Mac users send the big attachment to the Mac users and the Microsoft users? Is it basically compatible and interchangeable?
Correct. Yeah, there's a current glitch with the existing version of the Exchange server, so an upgrade would fix that problem, correct?
What I want to ask you is, you know, because I'm having an event at my home tomorrow night for school board presidents, I took the occasion to ask the lady organizing if she could ask some school boards, how many are using one or the other? And she told me that some are using one, some are using the other, and many are using both. What do you guys know empirically or anecdotally about what other districts are doing?
So, to your colleague's point, Mrs. Korbatov, it is a mix. Most districts decide, like, what are their goals and objectives with their choice? And then they back map the choice from that. So, at this point in time, there's no clear case of one option being chosen over another, Google being chosen, Microsoft Outlook being chosen, both being chosen. Each district looks at its needs and kind of back maps from that, as to what they want to go with.
Okay.
Things are evolving.
Yeah. So, if we were to upgrade the server, we already have the $15,000 expenditure. We could have a better Outlook, and we still, we have a Google. We have Google as well.
We do have Google, for sure.
Do we need to do anything with Google to upgrade it, so that whoever's using it has the best experience and the most efficacy?
No, we have what other districts have. We have the Google Education Suite that our teachers and our students are currently using, and it's working very, very well for them, including Google Classroom.
Okay, so then there doesn't seem to be a singularly preferred, I don't know how else to say it, but mode of server, I'm sure. I don't know how to phrase it.
Delivery.
Okay.
So this comes up in different IT meetings. We're part of different consortiums in Southern California, and it is that... So, this comes up in different IT meetings. We, we're part of different consortiums in Southern California, and it is that-
What are you hearing? What are you hearing?
All three options. Again, they, they-
One, the other, or all, or both?
Yes. The, all the districts look at what their needs are, what the direction of their superintendent is, what the, depending on whether the board was involved or not. So, it really is context-dependent.
Okay. So, I've been told by people who are techie that the Google has really excellent tools for education, for classroom, correct?
Absolutely.
But I've been told by Microsoft, by people in my own office, that that is the tool of business. Is that true? Do you, I mean, I know you're not in the business office. So, what do you use, Latonya? You use Outlook? Okay, I see the way you're smiling. All right.
And it's, it really is that. Education has, really uses Google. It is very user-friendly in education. And, and, and even some of the stuff that they have, I, I'd like to learn how to use, but the, the two just don't talk well. Like, if I'm, I can't open up certain spreadsheets and, on my Mac, and I bring my clunky, large Dell laptop, but that's what they have for business. It's just, me and Anthony talked about it before, and it's just educators and business people that, well, right brain, left brain.
Okay, so, so, I guess, I understand the push towards Google, but what's the downside of having both? That way, the business has what they want, and then the educators, Dr. Bregge, have the Google.
Well, it's, it's my understanding we would still have those products available. So, we would still have, like, the Excel and the-
We would.
PowerPoint. It's just that our main system would be just switching from Outlook to Google, but we would still have those products available for the business department.
So, could I ask, would there be a downside for them to actually implement the $15,000 expenditure into the upgrade of the server, so that that server's performing at its best? And your Google performs anyway at its best?
Well, I mean, the Google, we never have to do any upgrades to-
Anything, right.
Because they will do that. So, so I, that's a great question, but that would be for the technology department.
I mean, there are downside if you, we already spent the money, it's a sunk cost, but if you actually did the upgrades, how long would it take you to implement the hardware, Anthony?
It'd probably take about two months to upgrade it, so over the summer-
So, you could do it over the summer?
If we were to do that.
So, then we would basically have two Ferraris running, the best Outlook and the best Google, because Google's working anyway. Okay. So, then the next question I have for you, Terry Tao, is, yes, I understand that you could pull the data, as Dr. Bregge has said, and other, off Google, but what if the other person hires an attorney and says no to Google? Do not release that we're in litigation, or we're, you know, whatever, wrongfully accused of something. What happens then? So, my point is, when we owned our server, we just took it willy-nilly. Everything that was on it is ours. But Google would have a layer, I would believe, of some sort of neutrality initially. If, especially if the person we're trying to get information from sends a letter from an attorney saying, "Don't." Now, maybe it's never happened, but I-
No, it has happened. Generally, it, okay, I, I know I'm an attorney. This is how I view it. And I'll just tell you, and this is not, not the view of everybody. There is a layer of cost, having to deal with an attorney to get your documents or to have a fight over documents. And I've never been a very big fan of spending legal on anything. Generally, if you go straight to Google for your own documents, they will do the searches for you. For example, and I haven't really thought about this, but you get a lot of PRA requests.
Yes.
Public Records Act requests. And if you, I have gone to many school districts where we have to make the Public Records Act requests to Google and ask them to come up with the documents for us, and that generally goes through legal. Whereas, in the past, here, and in some of my other districts that are on Outlook, you can just ask them, and they'll do the search, and they'll get it for you. So, we've seen both.
But we have control of the search. We can review what we're turning over to the other side. I mean, you're theoretically turning over whatever's on your server that pertains to the CPRA, but you have, can, you can exercise some discretion.
Correct. What would happen is it would get disclosed, it depends really on the situation.
But not with Google? With Google, it would go through their legal.
They would often, one of the things that they'll often do is if you get into a really bad dispute, they'll do a, just a straight data dump. It won't look like emails. It'll just be one string of emails that'll go out for, you know, 100,000 pages.
Where does it go?
It just gives, they, they'll just give you a data dump, and then you have to sort through and figure out what is an email, and where one email starts and one email ends.
Okay. So, I, I guess what I would say to Dr. Bregge is because we are such a lucky district that has virtually no litigation ever.
Well, okay, that's, that's-
This is the one thing that, that I'm nervous about.
But that's assuming that, we're assuming that there are no administrative settings at all, that we can't retrieve our information. And unless there is a, a state law that is different from the other states in the country-
I don't, then, then is that a question?
Then, then that's what we need to bring back. But there are administrative settings, so that we could, we, that we're able to go back with our, our own email address as administrators to provide that, that documentation and oversight.
But what about the, what about the consultant and getting their data from them? They're not your employee, they're your consultant, and the server's not yours. It's Google's. It's Gmail. So, that, that's my only concern, is that we don't have control of, or, I mean, we even spent 30-plus thousand on an archive server to capture things that nobody could monkey with. So, anyone, I'm told, goes into that archive server would leave a footprint, right? So, it's, it can't, it can't be monkeyed with. This Gmail, we have to get permission through a lawyer, and then if they, if it gets convoluted, they do a data dump, and then who's going to go through it? I mean, I, I'm all for Google, but I just don't know why we would not spend the money we've already spent, or actually utilize the money we've already spent, to upgrade the server we already have and use both systems. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to preclude you from sending large attachments, but apparently, if you upgrade the server, you can have the pick of both.
Right. Well, and, and it's not just about the attachments. It's about the collaboration and the innovation, which is what we're asking our students and staff to be doing. So, it's, it's following that philosophy and methodology. So, I, we are, it's not about really choosing one or the other. It's about making the Google site more of our main site than it is, you know, not having, like, access to PowerPoint and Excel and those types of things.
Okay, so, I guess I'm, I want to, I want to obviously do what you think is best, in the best interest of the district. I'd just like to know if there's a way to carve out and leave an upgraded Microsoft server, or Outlook server, for the benefit of business, construction, consultants, so that we have some control about the business side of things, whereas the education side is on the other side of the house, in Google. That's fine. I just don't want to lose that part on the business, construction side.
Absolutely. We'll look into that, and I will personally start calling other school districts to, to see what they're doing with their construction, with their business. I will personally do that and, and get back to you at our next meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Terry, do you have anything else you want to tell us on this, or?
I was just going to say, what I'll do is I just handed my card with the attorney's name, who specializes in this. And we work with a lot of school districts. I'm sure that a lot of that information he'll know.
Anthony, so, you understand what Dr. Bregge's trying to capture, right? You do?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we all understand. But you understand mine and Howard's concerns?
Yes, correct.
Can they both be addressed? Can he get what he needs and create a more Google overall environment for the education side of the house? And then we keep the business side and the construction side in, in Outlook? We can do that?
Right. We'll look in, I'll work with Bernard Ed and work with Dr. Bregge to actually look into that, to see how we can fit all, all the needs into whatever solution we come up with.
Okay. Dr. Bregge, do you, do you think it's the right time to, to give direction for them to upgrade the server, since they already have the parts? Or would you like to wait to-
No, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I, I, you know, I want there to be some choice available, you know?
I think it looks like the business and the construction will choose one, and education will choose the other, because everyone seems to like Google on the education side, right?
Right. But it's, it's about providing training and moving some of our business office staff just into 2018.
Exactly. We, we actually, the email itself is, I don't know that it, there's not an issue one way or the other. I mean, it's email. It's, it, we still will have our, our Microsoft Office Suite that we will be accessing.
So, but Latonya, you will be better off if we upgrade the Outlook server, so that it performs better for whoever's using it?
Well, just like Dr. Bregge said, I, I am the dinosaur of your whole staff. I'm the oldest one of all of them. So, you know, us old people take, you know, we're, we need a little bit more change management than the rest of, of them, but it's not hard at all. If we, if you chose, it's just either way. I would, like you said, the legal thing, of course, we all know how that came about, and it was very advantageous for us to have access to all of that. But the rest, we, it's, we would be using the Microsoft Office Suite to, to open or to convert what we needed to.
May I add one point?
On our old dinosaur, big computers that we used to.
Yeah, Bernard Ed. Dr. Bregge?
No, let's, go ahead.
And on that point, some of the classified staff at DO has already participated in, in Google Suite training to much success. I mean, we, we were not focusing on mail. Quite frankly, we were focusing on other apps. So, I don't want to leave with the impression that the business office was not open to learning some of the apps in G Suite. They were. No, I wasn't talking to Ms. Kirk Cartwright, I'm Dr. Bregge. I was just, I was just sharing that there has been some PD for them.
Okay. I guess they need more, right?
Yes.
Yes, they need more PD. All right, Latonya, you're getting more PD, whether you like it or not.
I'm a lifelong learner.
Oh, see? She's got all the slogans ready. Thank you, Latonya. All right. So, Dr. Bregge, bring this back when you're comfortable. I guess June 6th or something?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, absolutely.
Actually, learning Jingo for things I don't really understand all that well, but I'm trying. So, trying, that's for sure.
Can you just say Google and not "the" Google?
The Google. I know, I sound like a dinosaur. I apologize. Okay.
Who is this Mr. Google?
Exactly.
I'll make motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Anyone want to pull anything? You already asked? Okay, thank you, Mr. Margot. You're very efficient today.
I try to be, in the few fleeting moments I'm here.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Okay. It was moved by-
Me.
Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Spitz, and unanimously passed by 4-0. Yes.
So, just want to make an announcement about the principles for the-
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry.
There was no revised. So, I didn't, I didn't-
There's no revised.
There was no revised.
Did we get a revised?
Still a calendar item. You want us to table the, you don't want us to-
Do you want us to pull those two items and do them? Okay. Yeah, so we'll pull, we'll pull the certificated personnel report. I apologize. I usually don't check on that end of the table for pulling from consent, so.
Thank you for doing it this time.
So, we'll just do a little reverse in time. The consent calendar is approved, minus item 10B1.
Okay, the administration would like to recommend Mr. Christopher Regan as the Beverly Vista Principal.
And you'll need to give the next one.
In addition, the administration would like to recommend Leonidas Tarka as the Horace Mann Assistant Principal.
He's not here, right?
He is not here. Thank you.
He is not here, but thank you for that.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Report, Certificated Personnel Report, XP1, as recommended by Dr. Bregge.
Second.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Goldstein, seconded by Mr. Spitz. Any comments? Oh, I just, no comment? I'd just like to say thank you, Chris, for coming to Beverly Hills High School to teach Spanish, and little did you know, shortly thereafter, you would be Principal of BV, but thank you for stepping in and stepping up, and it's been smooth sailing there. And thank you very much. And thank you for applying.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Should we do a roll call vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Okay, the ayes carry it. Welcome to Leonidas and welcome to Chris. Back, welcome again, back again. Thank you. What do you want to do? Yeah, we're going to move up Planning Facilities, because Mr. Margot is a traveling musician tonight. So, we're going to skip over just briefly Board Policies, Reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, Business and Finance.
Business and Finance. You would like, he would like to be here for Business, Finance, and Planning and Facilities. Okay, Business and Finance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Emergency Resolution 2017-2018-036, Refurbishment of Existing Elevator in Beverly Hills High School Building L.
I'll second that. Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by myself. Discussion.
Mr. Blake or Mr. Pileman? Just wanted to know, is the timeline still-
One of you go up there?
This summer.
Yes. Could you repeat the question?
Is the timeline this summer?
Our target is to complete the STC elevator overhaul during the summer months prior to the commencement of the fall quarter. The part procurement is running about two months. Install is looking at about three weeks. So, all efforts were, all efforts are being explored to confirm that start date for the new elevator on August 13th. But right now, we can't confirm that actual, meeting that actual target. So, in the interim, what we're doing is also installing an access control system in the STC elevator to limit the use to the intended personnel, to preserve the function of that particular elevator in its state. It is functioning at the moment. And also, the backup elevator, which is the building A freight elevator, which is 210 feet down the hall, is also functioning. Both elevators are checked each morning by the Maintenance and Operations Department. We're keeping a pretty close eye on that equipment.
Terrific, thank you. And is the elevator, the elevator stays operational until the parts come in?
That is correct.
Right, you're not, you're, it's only shut down for the actual three weeks of-
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pileman?
Mr. Pileman, can you also just talk a little bit about just kind of the history of, you know, the, the elevator, about the, the type of elevator that it is? I know that you've done some research on others like it, and then the problems that we're having with having the proprietary equipment. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
So, the elevator style here in the STC is a Kone Machine Roomless Traction Elevator. It's a proprietary design by the manufacturer, Kone, that came out several years ago. In checking not only our elevator over the last several months and its unreliability, but with other institutions that have the similar elevator, they're having experiences that we are as well. So, it's twofold. Number one, it's a proprietary piece of equipment. Kone's the only one that can work on it. Kone was the elevator service contractor for the school district, and due to the events that have transpired over the last several months, they have been changed to a different, more responsive elevator company. The elevator companies that we've talked about, talked with, including our new elevator service company, is highly recommending a non-proprietary control system be utilized in the overhaul of this elevator to expedite part availability and keep us from being steered towards one vendor for both service and part procurement. That's part of this program. So, like I said, we'll move to a non-proprietary system. We have more flexibility, more part availability, do a complete overhaul of the control system. In the meantime, put an access control process on the elevator. We think it's going to be keyed, but we're looking at card swipe. So, when Mark Mead does his elevator passes, he can hand out those keys or those cards to those individuals that are to be using the elevator and have permission to use the elevator.
Thank you. And I would just like to, just apologize for anybody that's listening and is well- Thank you. And I would just like to, um, just apologize for anybody that's listening and, as well as the board as well, that, um, you know, it is truly unacceptable to, to not have things up and working. And there are a lot of systems in the district that we can improve upon. And I am very apologetic that, um, you know, that we have let some people down. Uh, I think we've learned a lot of valuable lessons about what's, what's occurred. Uh, and there's a lot of people have been involved in this situation, but I think we've streamlined some of our processes on our end. And, and I think that it's taught us a very valuable lesson about what we would consider to be a district standard when it is something as, um, as specific as the, the Koning Elevate, Elevator. So, um, I thank you for all the research that you did. And, um, again, we certainly regret those experiences and, and hope in the future that, um, we can do a better job.
I, I just want to ask, uh, Ms. Carter, you're here, and I know this issue is brought up because of Ryan and, and her issues, health issues. Are they being addressed? If you wouldn't mind, I, I just want to make sure. What's that? Well, no, it, you know, we had a situation. Nobody wanted this to happen. It, it seemed like an extraordinary amount of time. There's explanations asked to, it's mechanical, it broke down. It wasn't optimal with that. I, I want to make sure that at least from the, the human side, we're doing everything we can for your daughter.
I believe that you are now.
Okay.
I'm hearing that it might take this long to get the parts and this long to actually get fixed. If that timeline had started when I first came to you on February 27th, there would be no question whether it would be done by the time school starts. And now that's in question, and that's unfortunate. So, uh, are you doing the right thing now? Yes. I wish this process had started quite a while back.
So, with that said, gentlemen, anything you can do to expedite this and, and keep the pressure on, because it's an outside vendor, keep the pressure on them to try to get this working at the beginning of, uh, August when the children return.
Are you done, Howard?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, I have a couple of questions about the Kone elevator. So, I, I'm either lucky or unlucky enough to manage buildings with lots of elevators. I've never heard of this company.
Kone?
Yeah.
Um, Kone would be considered one of the large three. You have Otis, Thyssen Krupp.
Oh, it's an Otis subsidiary?
No.
No.
It's, it's separate companies, but the, the, the industry's not that large, as you know.
Okay.
You have Otis Elevator, one company. Thyssen Krupp is another company.
I have both those elevators.
Kone as well. They're a very large firm, and they're up there with those big boys.
Okay. So, then I guess I must be fortunate because I've only had to deal with Thyssen Krupp, Otis. And then I had a Malar elevator that got bought out by Thyssen Krupp. Okay. So, what I want to ask you is Thyssen Krupp and Otis do not act the same way Kone does with their parts? Am I right?
This particular elevator was a proprietary patented elevator by Kone. Now, and it's been some time since the STC building was constructed. Otis and Thyssen Krupp now make a similar type of passenger car using similar technology. This techno, technology was very new at the time. Um, LACCD has seven of these units right now, and they're doing everything they can to keep all seven of them running.
So, then they have bugs, they have low, they, they break down apparently?
A reliability issue after this lifespan that's since it's, since that elevator's been installed is being experienced, that we're experiencing is being experienced by some other districts. I also forgot to add earlier that we went and looked at the design standards for the upcoming construction projects and tried to apply a little lessons learned. That traction elevator style was, uh, listed in the design standards for moving forward. As of last Wednesday, that is no more.
So, what are you moving forward with now?
We're moving to a traditional machine room hydraulic elevator, um, that's your standard, um, that both Thyssen Krupp, Otis makes and three other vendors to try to create some competition in the market and improve our pricing point as well.
So, it's a standard hydraulic, it's a standard construction, the standard fix. So, any competent repair company, doesn't have to be associated with, doesn't have to be named Thyssen Krupp or Otis, can come there and fix the elevator and you get parts?
That's the direction we're heading.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, Ms. Corvett. I need to leave. Can we just call to question, and then you can get your other questions answered?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
And then I want to ask you a few more questions.
No, just call to question.
I'll call the question, yeah. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Carrie's four oh.
Sure. Good luck having fun. The reason I want to stay on this is because, um, this is, I guess, a, a, a design that is, that has failure, obviously. Poor reliability and a lot of failure, correct?
That's what we're experiencing.
So, what I've been told by people is that unfortunately, some of the staff and staff giving the keys to the students are using it more like freight. Now, if the, if the elevator were more robust, it might be able to tolerate more of that. But it doesn't seem to tolerate anything other than the gentlest entry and, and people coming in and coming out. Have you noticed that? Because that's the anecdotal reports I'm getting.
The breakdowns that Maintenance and Operations Department were servicing over the last several months were not keyed to one specific issue. One service call resulted in a, um, failure of Part A. The next service call was Part B.
So, you're saying it's just constant?
So, there was, so, so there was multiple events going on. Now, it's not a freight elevator. We have one of those down the hall. If you were in a, um, high-capacity, high-rise building in LA, this would not be the style of choice. So, that's why we were looking at the options between now and the, and the retrofit to put on an access control system onto the elevator. There's quite a few students in this particular building and as it's adjoined to Building A. I've spent some time in the buildings and I've watched elevator use. Um, there's a lot of use going on. And so, we're working with Mark Mead, we're working with Gino in the Maintenance and Operation to sit down and, and identify who is the intended occupants of these particular elevators. And let's gear our policy towards that to ensure that the people who need the elevators get access to the elevators.
So, Jeff, the, the freight elevator down the hall does work and it is more robust and reliable.
That is correct.
So, Dr. Bregge, would a student with, or anyone with a disability be able to use the freight elevator?
They, they can. That's, that wouldn't be our, our first primary access for them, but.
But if it was an emergency, someone was in a wheelchair, someone had a, you know, the, the person in question has, um, you know, medical condition, they could get on the freight elevator?
It, it can be used for, for passenger.
Is it normal, easily used? Is it something that you figure out, you get on, you press a button, it goes? I mean, it's not?
It, it operates very much the same way, but it's, it's really intended for.
And it's very reliable compared to the Kone?
Well, yes. It, it, there has been two instances.
So, the, the one person in the audience saying it's not down the hall, it is?
It's not down the hall from here. The first floor, it's not down the hall. I understand that it's down the hall on the upper, on the upper floors. It's not down the hall from here.
Okay. So, if you're down here, you don't have access to an elevator to get you up, or if you're, is that?
That's correct. The, the fir, the first floor of Building A matches up with the second floor of, of the STC building or Building L because of the grade change on the campus.
Okay, I understand. So, uh, we have now looked at our future elevator design and purchasing. We will not be going to this, but only to hydraulic. We've learned our lesson or the, or now we're learning the lessons of previous boards who chose this.
Maybe not necessarily hydraulic, but a,
Definitely not traction.
Capacity elevator, not a machine room list where all the equipment's on the top of the roof cab that goes up and down with the elevator. So, we're analyzing right now our requirements. Building B1 and B2 elevator got put on hold last week. Number one, car size, gurney access, capacity, speed for floor, all these things that you've probably dealt with in, in some of your properties. To pick that elevator that we want to use to model moving forward with the remainder of the construction projects that are currently in the design phase.
Okay, so, very quickly, I, I, how do you take this elevator, which is necessarily obsolete, but it's just a very poor design? Are you going to turn it into a completely different design elevator?
No, it's still going to, it's still going to function as a machine roomless elevator with the controls parts on the cab. There's a, a firm that our elevator, our new elevator service company has identified that's making retrofit overhauls for these elevators.
Do they actually specialize in figuring out how to make these Kones work, not as they were originally designed?
And, and there, like I said earlier, there's Otis, Thyssen Krupp, the other, um, well-known names in the industry all started making these types of elevators. Kone was just one of the first early adopters of this technology. So, I can't say that one made today is more reliable than one made, um, 10, 15 years ago. But we only have the experience that we have now, and the one that was made a decade ago obviously is not doing what we need it to do now.
Okay. When you redesign this with a new company, um, there, there's actually no way to take the cab out and just start over? That would be extremely expensive, but this is about a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's correct.
So, I, I worry like it's, you know, putting lipstick on a pig. I don't know how else, you know. I worry that we're going to get some more reliability, but not appreciably more for a long term of time. Is there a Plan B?
Right, that's a, I don't want to speculate on the reliability of this particular overhaul. The technology has been around for some time now, so other manufacturers are making these particular overhaul parts. That's in our favor. Plan B, um, to remove the entire elevator and put in a different type of system. You know, someone told me once that anything can be done in construction.
Doesn't mean it should.
Doesn't mean it should.
Right.
So, a, a new elevator, um, in that particular building, it's a four-floor elevator, it's four stops, retrofitting inside existing building.
Unlikely.
Hundred thousand a floor, hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty thousand a floor.
So, it's a difference of one fifty or five hundred thousand?
And four months. I mean, three to four months. That's a pretty big operation.
Okay, so, um, if you make this fix, how long do you expect it to be relatively trouble-free and reliable? Is there any expectation of time?
It's, uh, duration after it's up and running with the new system in it, it's a pretty tough question to answer. I mean, I can get the life cycle analysis for you and get back with you, but I would expect that unit to last 10 years.
Okay.
Um, but I would like to verify that and get life cycle information, concrete life cycle information back to you.
So, if you spent money on a brand-new cab and system on four-stop elevator, and you roughly say it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I'm not advocating to do that, what is the reliability and what is the life cy, cycle of that cab?
Again, um, life cycle of an office building, if you want, because that's where more of elevators are, you see that more in multi-story apartments and in, um, office buildings. I would expect that to go 20, 25 years, if you're lucky, maybe a little longer. But, um, you'll be looking at some cab retrofits between now and then, um, wear and tear. If you look at the STC elevator, you can tell just by looking at the floor how much traffic's been in that elevator. And I think more traffic than what was originally intended in the design is one of the items that's going on with that elevator.
Do you expect that your new refurbishment, new system, is going to be able to withstand that kind of traffic? Because I think you have to presume there'll be a significant amount of traffic.
That's why the access control system is what was talked about. If we, if we have a policy that preserves that elevator use for the occupants it's intended for, as opposed to just everyone who wants to not climb stairs, um, we could be back where we are in, in, you know, the foreseeable future. The Horace Mann project has an access control system on that particular elevator. And I think that it's a positive change to the policy to put an access control system on elevators moving forward and preserve those units for the people it's intended for.
Okay, um, you know, I, I, I hope it's not a Band-Aid. Obviously, I voted for it. I'm concerned it is a Band-Aid, even though a robust Band-Aid. But, um, you know, we don't have an extra three hundred thousand to throw at this. But, um, I, I predict in 10 years, the next few boards will be right back here. And they're going to bite the bullet and do this all over again, or go to a different system entirely? I just, you know, I, I, you know, I think we're chasing our tail, but I understand why.
I think that having parts available by more than just one vendor is a huge plus in making this decision.
So, at least we will have some market, market forces to help us when we have to pay for these really expensive repairs.
Correct, as opposed to being held hostage by one vendor.
So, do you think that when they put in this elevator 10-plus years ago, that they, the board then or the architects then didn't understand that this was a Lone Ranger of a system and they would be at the mercy of Kone?
I've seen them before. They were, they were marketed as a very cost-effective, um, el, system for, um, medium use. And like I said, LACCD in our, in our investigation has seven of them.
So, they're tortured seven times more than we've been. Mm-hmm.
And they've hired the same elevator service company that we have now hired to work on those.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I understand it better. I hope the public understands it better as well. Okay, um, I think we're on to superintendent, no, we're on to board policies, correct? Okay. First reading of the revision to Board Policy 6174. Administrative Regulation AR 6174 and Exhibit 6174, Education for English Language Learners.
I'll make a move, a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Spitz and seconded by Mr. Goldstein. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Okay, it's carried three oh. Pam, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do, do have a, just a picture that I want to go up. I think it's important to just, um, bring everybody back a little bit to a really important issue that has been happening for quite some time, but it's been, um, out of sight, out of mind. And, um, I would like to talk a little bit about the metro situation and the construction that's happening directly, uh, behind our bungalows at Beverly Hills High School. We have a critical responsibility here to provide, uh, safety. And as you know, we have very serious questions, oh, thank you. We have very serious questions about, um, some of the things that are happening directly behind our portables and our bungalows. And so, um, this is an example, this little map here, as you can see in the orange, these are our 33, uh, bungalows, portables, um, in our classrooms for students and our staff. And as you can see, directly right behind there is, uh, the lay-down area, is what we call it, for metro. And this is going to be an active construction site for the next seven years. And if you know what's happening in, um, uh, the La Cienega area with all of the noise in the construction, that's exactly what's going to be happening in this area right here. Um, they've already started to put up some sounding walls. And so, um, I actually, um, with Ms. Curdie, we went over and I was, got a ladder, thanks to the Maintenance Department, and stood on top of the portables just to get an idea of what was happening over there. And there is quite a bit of work that's going on. They're doing some soil testing, they're spraying the soil down consistently. And the reason they're doing that is because this is toxic soil that, that blows in the direction of our portables. And so, the demo areas that you see right there, um, is, those, uh, buildings are vacant and there's a parking garage. You can drive back there, they won't let you through. But, um, that will all be demolished within, uh, the next couple of months this is starting. And so, it's important that, um, it's here and it's now, and there is a very serious, um, And so, it's important that it's here, and it's now, and there is a very serious, there's just serious implications from this construction area. And I, I just don't think that people realize how close this is, and so, wanna see if this will, perhaps... I'll have Josh just, I've got one more picture. There we go. So, this is Sean Tubey, who's in, in our audience, are gonna be our new student board member, and obviously Jonathan Artel. This is just to give you an idea of how close that wall is to where, that, that full construction site for seven years with dust particles and heavy machinery, semi-trucks, that's how close that is to a, an active learning environment in our school district. There are other alternatives. And so, it is extremely disappointing, knowing that metro is moving forward in this regard, when there have been options and other alternatives. This is clearly a case where this is unnecessary, and they are pushing forward at the stake of the health and welfare of our students and staff in this area. So, this is not about not supporting innovation in our community, because we are a school district that is innovative, so we absolutely support that type of expansion, but there are alternatives, and it doesn't need to be directly on our backs. And this is within just three-arm lengths of where teaching and learning occurs at Beverly Hills High School, and again, for seven years. So, I just wanted you to get a different perspective, because it's right here, right now, you can hear the noise, you can hear the construction that's already starting, and I wanted to share that with you publicly.
Well, his arm is mid, he can't put his whole arm down.
It's not even three people, right?
Yeah.
That's a good point, that Ms. Chisholm, we're not that tall. So, we do have short arms, the three of us. So, thank you for pointing that out. And that's all I have for my report. That's, that's all for my report.
Thank you. You have a...
I, I, I do, are we gonna be doing, allowing the public comment?
Oh, you wanna speak after Ms. Ordaz?
I did want, I just read, I'm the one outside, I don't know if you'd like to speak.
You're welcome, Ms. Ordaz, you can speak, and then Mr. Artel, you can finish up this segment. Thank you.
I'm Al Moradaz, and I'm a Beverly Hills resident, and as Mrs. Korbitov and knows, and several other school board members, I have been very supportive of the district's fight against MTA going back for years. But, you know, the questions that, what you present is very concerning to me, so I really, I just wanna be very clear on this, okay? Because I, I just wanna make sure that I am understanding this. So, you're telling us that the schools are going to be unsafe because of what MTA is doing, when they start and lay down that construction? I mean, how is this going to impact the health and safety of our children? You know, because I, I've heard it said, you know, when we were talking about construction, I've heard it said, build it and they will come, and I'm sort of hearing, plant fear and they'll leave. I'm, I'm really concerned about what I'm hearing, so I want you to know.
I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Terry Tao is very conversant, so if you'd like him to answer, he can get very granular.
Well, I'd like Dr. Breggy to, because he's the one that's bringing this up, so, and then I'll be happy to hear, of course, what he has to say.
Well, no, I'm gonna let Terry speak, and he's the expert, Dr. Breggy's giving a lot of his information.
And I'm happy to, I'll jump in.
Thank you. Since much of the information associated with MTA is actually public record, there is some...
On the website, Terry?
It's, some is on, much of it is on various websites, including MTA's own, own website, you can actually pull up the MTA supplemental environmental impact statement, where they moved the lay-down area to its current location. Originally, the plan was to have the lay-down area...
One thousand.
Yeah, one, it's across from the Twin Towers. But, the, the current location, as is the school district in August of 2017, pointed out the deterioration of the air quality, and the noise, and various problems that would be caused associated with this lay-down area. And we actually laid out the science, MTA did a, they did some review, and what they concluded was, they could mitigate some of the air quality problems by doing two things, and this is how they handled it. They're not planning on leaving, they're planning on using this lay-down area, no matter how much this district shames, I don't think that that's going to make a difference with regard to MTA, they are coming. The only thing that could work is the one lawsuit that is continuing, which is the SEIS lawsuit, that is, that is being undertaken by the school district. But, if you left it up to MTA, what would happen is, number one, they would put up a larger sound wall, so their plan is to go twenty feet up, that looks like it's probably about fifteen, so it would go up another five feet from there. So, their theory is that that will help alleviate some of the sound, but not all. They're gonna take it down to sixty dBs, is what they say. That's the city standard minimum, or, or standard maximum, rather. For a proper learning environment, California Department of Education has said you need thirty-five dBs or below. We do not know the sound rating of modulators, MTA didn't analyze the sound rating associated with modulators. Our analysis was that it was going to be more than thirty-five dBs. We pointed out the air quality problems from dust, but the ones that we're most concerned about was actually air quality problems that would come from diesel exhaust. There are two, they're categorized scientifically under two different categories. PM tens is dust, that, that will get into your lungs, you can cough it out. Not good, but it, it's not, it's not that, it's not gonna kill you. PM two-point-fives is the particulates that come from diesel exhaust. The PM two-point-fives do have an effect on the health, because you get it into your lungs, you cannot cough it out. There's a lot of studies on it. I've been collecting, I actually have a whole bunch of these studies. The, the MTA recognizes that there's a deterior, that there's a problematic effect associated with two-point-fives. So, in their mitigation measures, their solution for it was to add air filters to every one of the classrooms at Beverly Hills High School. That works if you're not an athlete, and it also works when you're in class, but not when you're outside of class. So, we do not know how it is that MTA views the other uses, we believe that that's a problem. There's also a vibration problem, not, not as serious, but there will be a vibration problem, so the two that are most troubling to us is the noise and the PM two-point-fives. And that, that's a lot of what the lawsuit that the district has right now is focused on.
Mr. Tao, Terry? I think that we had, we, we actually found out accidentally in court, when the lawyers realized it wasn't a thousand feet, but less than a hundred, it's at the property line. So, the other thing we realized in court a couple of years ago, or a year ago, was that the methane gas they speak of, that it's safe, is only in relationship to their tunnels. And we made it clear, and the judge actually caught on, that they have no idea what happens to methane as it migrates around the tunnels once it's disrupted by the tunnel boring machine. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. Actually, we don't know how much they know with regards to the effects associated with methane, if you look at...
Even on their tunnels?
Even on their own tunnels. You look at their environmental impact statement, and the supplemental environmental impact statement, they were asked to study the effects of methane. And much of the report is actually focused not on the, the effects associated with the school, but more on whether or not it would cause an effect on the tunneling. So, I, I do not have a very good feel that they did a significant amount of studying of what, what putting a tunnel through would cause as far as problems. If you recall, the reason why the tunnel is not here now, in the first place, originally the tunnel was supposed to go all the way through downtown LA, and then supposed to go through the La Brea area and then at UCLA, just like what they're trying to finish now. There was a Ross Dress for Less on their route, and something happened, it's not clear.
Nineteen eighty-five or eighty-six, and it blew up.
That Ross Dress for Less, because of the tunneling, supposedly filled up with methane gas and exploded.
So, we were at a meeting a year ago on Dr. Breggy's birthday, I remember it, because it was actually her birthday.
That's right.
February fifteenth, and Mr. Spitz was with me, and we had our lawyers on the phone, and we asked them if the TBM, tunnel boring machines, hit an oil casing like they hit a water casing in Seattle, Big Bertha, what would happen? So, there was about fifteen, twelve to fifteen metro people in the room, engineers, lawyers, bureaucrats, I don't know. And they essentially looked stunned and reluctant to answer and said, "Well, we can fix it from the bottom sometimes," I said, "Okay." "Well, we typically fix it from the top," and then I asked, "Well, what if there was a building on top of that?" And very quietly, they wouldn't answer, I said, "Is it true you would have to tear down the building to get to the TBM?" And they said yes. So, people need to understand that not only, you know, are the tunnels very shallow, hence they thwarted our ability to put parking under Building C, when they said for years that it wouldn't matter. But apparently, it did, did matter. They also do not know what will happen to all the methane gas as it migrates, and it gets caught in the foundations of buildings and nooks and crannies. In the boiler room of the swim gym, it gets very, very combustible and very explosive. So, I would say to some people in the public realm, that you may think we're crying, you know, fire in a crowded room, we are not doing that. We are telling people unequivocally, there are considerable risks, that's why there is no heavy rail under instructional buildings in a public school with abandoned oil wells. There's a reason there isn't one like this in fifty states, because it's not done. It's not, it's not thoughtful, it's not normal, and it's against any rubric of public safety. It's just not done. But because there was political backscratching, and all kinds of crony capitalism, corporate welfare, and pay-to-play behind us in Century City, and I absolutely don't mind if developers make money, I like real estate, that's my business. I do mind when developers make money on the backs of children, and jeopardizing our learning environment and our only high school. That really does bother me. That's really unethical and immoral, and it's actually quite, it should be illegal, but apparently, the Metro Board and LA City Council think it's actually business as usual. So, I'd like to say to people one more time, if I'm wrong, great, I overreacted. If you're wrong, we have a really big problem. So, the fact that we're fighting this hard, there's a reason. I have better things to do with my time on this border and in life. I think Dr. Breggy has other fights he could fight, but he recognized very quickly, this is a matter of public safety, this is a matter of our sovereignty, and quite frankly, we're gonna lose sovereignty over this entire campus. Is that true, Mr. Tao?
You will have difficulty, anything above the lines. There's an easement that will be, that will be created above the lines, and we will need consent from metro every time you build above.
So, I've said in a flippant manner, if you have to build a doghouse, I'll have to ask metro for permission. I don't think that's flippant.
That's true.
So, for the public, so this is a fight for your sovereignty, your very way of life, and your sanctity on this campus. And parents have told me that they don't think they wanna send their kids here when it's tunneling. They're not sure they wanna send their kids here, when it's actually a moving, oxygenated, electrified tube through fields of methane gas and hydrogen sulfide eighteen hours a day. People don't really wanna send their kids to that kind of school. So, I would say to the city council and to the public, just imagine a school district that doesn't have a viable high school, that doesn't have a viable school district. Do people move into these cities? Do they do that? No, they don't, probably. So, property values are at a risk, our way of life is at a risk. If property values are at a risk, how do police and all the other ancillary, not ancillary, heartbeat of our community get paid for? So, these are really big questions, existential. I, I take some umbrage at, at, you know, the, the notion that somehow we're separated from city council. We're with the kids, we're with the community, we're with public safety, we're against methane gas getting trapped in buildings. I'm against particulates getting in kids' lungs. My own daughter has asthma, my other daughter has reactive airway disease, I wouldn't be able to send her here. So, I'm just saying that, you know what, whatever the city council's doing, God bless, that's their business, and I respect their right to say and do and write whatever they want. But we're here, out in front, protecting kids, protecting the community, protecting this campus. I make no apologies for it, and I don't cast dispersions on the council, they can do whatever they think is necessary, write, do, it's not my business. My business is right here behind this desk. And so, I don't stick my nose in their business, and they don't have to stick their nose in ours. I'm fine, I'm fine going the way we've been going, we've been doing that for eight years, and it's worked out fine, and I don't need to, you know, get into their beehive, and they don't have to get into ours. But I want the public to know, we're not overreacting. This is serious. I hope the public knows, I know Jonathan knows, we've had discussions, and I know the kids know, and I know Mr. Tubey knows, this is really serious, this is your home away from home, this is your high school. So, I already got my education, I got to go here. So, I wanna keep this whole for the rest of the generations of kids to come here, and yet born to come here. I'd like this to be a high school for the next hundred years. So, with that, if Mr. Tao, you have any other questions or comments, please feel free, you have a forum.
Gosh, I didn't actually know that I would be speaking today.
Well, you're pretty conversant.
The, the, the most interesting thing that we actually have out was, we actually contacted the former director for the California Department of Education, and she actually wrote a letter on behalf of the school district.
What's her name?
Kathleen Moore. Kathleen Moore also had, was instrumental in working on behalf of California Department of Education, because the high-speed rail decided that they wanted to do something similar with regard to Bakersfield High School, and she was able to stop the high-speed rail from going immediately over next to Bakersfield High School. So, this is what she wrote in correspondence that we included, dated July eighth, 2017. And I'll just give you the little quote from it. "The following is my expert opinion based on over thirty years of school facilities experience at the local, state, and national level. Most importantly, I can state unequivocally, as the former director of the School Facilities Division of the California Department of Education, and the State Superintendent of Public Instruction's representative on the State Allocation Board, that were this school site with the MTA train line beneath it before the CDE for site approval, it would not receive such approval due to the safety and environmental concerns. MTA and high school uses on the same site are irrevocably incompatible and represent poor planning and administrative oversight on the part of leaders proposing such a project." That is, in essence, what it is, that we, as the school district, and your leader... That is, in essence, what it is that we, as the school district and your leaders here at the school district see as being of primary importance, and that is the safety, health, and educational environment of the students. We understand that with regard to MTA and the need for a subway line, it's extremely important to the operation of Southern California. But the two uses, as pointed out here, are fundamentally incompatible.
Jonathan, do you have any comments?
I was going to touch on this in my report, which I think is right up next.
Sure.
If anyone has anything else to add, please feel free to do so. Otherwise...
Where do we put the kids? I hope we have a plan B.
We can't...
I don't know where I go. I live across the street. It's like, oh my gosh.
Well...
Where do we put the kids?
Well, you know what, Alma? It's a major concern. It keeps me up at night and I'm, you know, we're working on multi-fronts. One is to keep the legal, to keep the pressure, and the other is to find practical solutions if it doesn't work. That's the truth. I don't have answers for you now. I don't certainly have answers. I can divulge in public comment. I apologize. But it's forthcoming. But, you know, I think these kids are worth fighting for. I think this campus is worth fighting for. And it's worth fighting for this community, for the residents sitting in front of me. We all deserve better. We didn't ask for this. And I think it's regrettable when certain people in the public blame us for spending money on lawyers. You know, quite frankly, I don't even react that much anymore. I just like shake my head in total disbelief and dismay. What would you spend to survive something? God forbid you were terminally ill. You'd spend anything to not be. So that's how, not just me, multiple boards and iterations of this board before me, I mean with me, have seen it that way in a multiple of four-one votes or mostly five-oh. So contrary to one publication's view, that one board member, namely myself, has a hocus-pocus magic brew that can make people vote a certain way and do things on my own, it is ridiculous. This is what, after we hear from our consultants, our experts and our lawyers, this is what we understand to be a huge threat to the sustainability of this campus and this community. And that's why boards, almost in full majority, have been at this for close to eight and a half years. It's not an accident. And to those who would like us to fold up, then if I take your logic to its conclusion, we should surrender the campus and give up on the kids and give up on our right to be here. And quite frankly, we're here first. Our use is higher and better, and I hope the courts one day will understand that or the political forces. We're not giving up. I think we should go down fighting. I think we should go down swinging. That's what you do when you believe in something and you fight for it. You don't give up. And I don't know who would think it's moral or just to give up on our kids. I certainly don't think. I make no apology for this, and it's taken a lot of my own personal energy, time, and money, but it's worth the fight. It is always noble to fight what you believe in, especially if it's for children. So we'll keep coming back with more of these updates and hopefully with some good news, like we have with Karen Christensen, and hopefully some good movement forward. But the most important thing is to engage these young people because it's their future at stake. We've lived our lives, at least to a large degree, and we've been to school.
On that note, let's hear from the chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Korbatov. I appreciate those comments. And I also appreciate Mr. Tao. I think you very effectively delineated a lot of the existential concerns posed by this conflict with Metro in terms of the safety of students, the future of our campus, our ability to have safe facilities, to keep our students safe. Those are issues that really are at stake. And we've obviously spent a large amount of money through litigation, but I think that that's not the only route that we can take. We should be mobilizing our students. One issue that is, that we need to work on as student leaders is mobilizing students and making sure that they're informed and aware of what the issues facing our students are. So to that end, this summer, we're going to be putting together a group of about fifteen students. This will include about five students from ASB, three students from Highlights, Kbev, and then other students from outside of those groups, prominent student leaders on campus. And that group is going to meet repeatedly over the summer and come up with solutions. How are we going to get students informed? How are we going to mobilize students? How are we going to put a student voice to an issue that's largely been fought through litigation to this point? So, I mean, it's crucial. I think that, you know, I will be around to help the initial establishment of that group.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for stepping up because I know you're off to college soon. Thank you.
I am, but I'm going to stick around and try and help establish it and get it going well. Sean is going to be here, I think, I'll try and work closely in tandem with him so that by the time I move on, he'll be able to grab the gears and keep this running. And my vision for this group is that it obviously needs to start now with Metro. And I think this group can really get its feet underneath it by tackling an enormous issue like this. But my vision for the future of that group is it's not specifically focused on Metro. It's a student group that focuses on the existential issues facing our district and offers a variety and diversity of student voice that offers solutions and thoughts and insight into those discussions. So, you know, one student board member, it's great, it's fantastic that our school district offers this position and offers a voice for a student to try and reach out to other students and represent their interests, but one voice is never enough. I'm hopeful that by putting together this group, we'll be able to represent a larger group of students, we'll be able to have more students who we can leverage to get this information out to students. And we want to come in in August swinging. We want our students to be very aware of what's going on and give them opportunities to be active. We had a walkout a couple months ago dealing with gun reform that students, for them, by and large, felt that guns posed a threat to our safety, that our campus needed to be safer, that we needed fencing, we needed SROs, that changes to our gun laws needed to be made. That's what's going to happen here. That's what a group like this is going to work on. And that's, you know, and I hope that, and I know that this board is committed to working with groups like that, to give them the information and the resources they need, the support they need, to be able to go out to the student population, mobilize them, make their voices heard, and hopefully make a difference in this conflict. So that's...
Jonathan, thank you so much for stepping up. I think people are wondering why it took so long and it's just human nature not to realize a threat till it's really staring at you. And I don't blame the public and I don't blame the students, you know, with gun violence and, you know, what happened just on Friday in Santa Fe, God rest those ten souls and those in the hospital. You know, there's always a lot going on in our lives. It's very hard to keep the balls up in the air. But I think now your eyes will not fail you. It's there. And, you know, the board is resolute. We're still in the game a hundred, ten percent. Talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, talk to everyone. We have to lock hands. We have to come together on this a hundred percent. And to those who criticize the board and Dr. Bregge, thank you, Dr. Bregge, for taking up this fight. It means a lot to me personally, but it means a lot to many in this community, especially our family and the children here in the district. And I would say to the public, don't blame the victim. We didn't ask for this. You know, we're literally, you know, hunted down like prey on this. We did not ask for this. If you're mad at someone, be mad at Antonia Villarigosa and Zav Yoroslavsky and now Eric Garcetti, and be mad at the politicians and the Metro Board members who all turn their back on our community and our children. Don't be mad at a board that's been fighting for what we think is in the best interests of our children. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing really quick that I think is important that you touched upon, and that is that when we met with the Metro execs, and as you stated, Mr. Korbatov and Mr. Spitz was there as well, that we're finally putting a face to what's happening here. Because it's just, you know, they're so used to just putting through their plan without putting a face to the plan. And it was really disturbing to be able to sit in those meetings and to ask legitimate questions about student safety and actually have them look at each other and provide us statements back saying that, you know, "We'll worry about that when we get to it." And that's a quote, that's a quote from the meeting that I sat at, that I could not believe when we talked about the methane and the oil wells. To have that type of response on our watch, that this is something that we are going to fight and to push into the very end, and now that we have the most important people involved, and that's our students, you know, we're not going to go away.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. No, it's the last turn of the bend. We're going to stay the course. Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan, and welcome, our future... I think, Jonathan, your last meeting is June sixth?
The next Tuesday, if that's the sixth.
Yeah, seventh, seventh, okay, yeah, June sixth is D-Day. So we'll do the seventh. We'll do June seventh. Okay, so, and then our next meeting, I guess sometime in June nineteenth, Mr. Tubi will be joining us. Okay, we can't wait either. All righty, thank you. Planning and facilities and then, I think...
I move approval of professional service agreement with Leighton Consultant for Beverly Hills High School, project B1, B2.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was just waving goodbye to some people. Okay, planning and facilities, we're at...
We made the motion. It's a discussion.
Okay, so, Mr., you made the motion?
I moved to approve.
Mr. Goldstein moved to approve and Mr. Spitz made the motion?
Yep.
And discussion? Any discussion? I have none. And Mr. Spitz, you okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Stentions, no's? Okay. Fifteen, professional and official business.
Dr. Bregge.
Dr. Bregge, this is yours? Or this is Mr. Blake, or...
Well, it's kind of...
Both.
It's kind of both of us. So I'll let Mr. Blake kind of come up, but this was, this was an idea that was generated as we kept hearing from different stakeholders and community members, just the accountability piece. And we have a really good plan for communication between the business office, construction, that integrates the cabinet level, also with our entire leadership team, also with our board subcommittee on construction. And so this is just kind of an added accountability feature, and I'll let Mr. Blake kind of rip through this. There's a lot of slides, but I think it's important to the process.
This is a, specifically is a Citizens Construction Advisory Committee. And I've used this in my career, working with public works, school districts, from the very beginning of my career with school districts. The last program we used ran about fifteen years at Los Virginas. And the folks that were on that original Citizens Construction Advisory Committee stayed on through three superintendents, and the last one was Dan Stepanowski. And same folks were on that committee for fifteen years. And the value of it was being able to communicate from the perspective of trained or individuals that are executives of large construction companies or development companies, were able to review what was taking place during the execution of the bond, execution of construction management, construction administration, kind of all the parts and pieces of the business process, and were able to be a resource to the board. So let me go through this really quick, and it's just the features of this type of advisory committee. Does not replace the CLC, is not, doesn't replace that statutory piece. This is a voluntary group. And I think in this... Oh, man, that was great. So the purpose of it is to help the board provide accountability to Beverly Hills community while minimizing the risk by utilizing committee expertise and advising the board with respect to implementation of designated construction projects. This does not replace the CLC, but it's another opportunity to access a group of individuals either for the CLC or for the board specifically relating to questions that would come from third-party people in the community that their business is running major projects and delivering major projects. The objective is to support the Boards of Education's commitment to complete construction projects on time, within budget, and at minimum risk, to supplement and expand the knowledge base and expertise of the Board of Education with regards to such projects. I've found that to be invaluable over the course of twenty years. As you know, we've been able to deliver, we've stated many times in the past, our company's been able to deliver a little over a billion dollars' worth of this type of work. And we haven't written a change order. We've had no time extensions and no lawsuits that have been brought against the school district. Part of that collaboration and communication to the board and to the community is how we do it. Most people would ask, "Well, how did you do that?" And it's hard to answer unless you, it's your business in private sector and you understand it. So this is a group of people that can communicate effectively how we actually do this. Okay? So this is, I'm getting the weeds here, I'll go through this very quickly. It's, I'm suggesting from our previous experiences, we've gleaned from the bylaws from those other committees, kind of what the responsibilities are, and this just, you have copies of it, we can read through it. It's pretty straightforward. How it's organized, it's structured, it's comprised of five or six citizens selected by the superintendent, by the bond program manager. In addition, the district superintendent and/or bond manager will advise the committee. There's requirements, okay? Those requirements include development and construction experience or related field, general understanding of school facilities issues, and general understanding of budgets and cost containment practices. The tenure of the committee, a little more weeds, this is organizational components, this is how long, this is generally how they work. This is pretty common and straightforward. This is one that's important to me. This is something, the two parts that have helped me a great deal is the board's choice to utilize a facility subcommittee on a weekly basis with two board members and the superintendent. What that's done has been able to communicate, collaborate, pull together, and right the ship, so to speak, on major issues with facilities and construction. What this is, is actually taking that information and expanding it into a group of people whose communication, advice, and collaboration is further expanded. So what the suggested timeline is, is we want to, this is just a suggested timeline to the board, announcement of openings, deadline of applications, July, selection process, July one to, say, July fifteenth, and committee appointments, August board meeting. So this is from our experience about how long it takes to contact people in the community and get those applications in, have the selection process, and bring that back to the board. Further, the qualification standard, just go through this, this is pretty academic. It's better if you, it's live in the geographic boundaries, child enrolled in the district. Officers, this is details of how it works, and we can read this, it's pretty straightforward. Then there's some applications for what if things goes wrong and there's some conflicts, there's a provision for that. This one's important, the authority of the members. The committee operates as a group. The committee members shall not have the authority to direct staff, consultants, or contractors of the district. There's a really important reason for that. Is that correct, Mr. Tao?
Oh, yeah. So that you don't have conflict.
Right. The committee shall not deal with issues pertaining to personnel, contract performance, or legal matters. If there's a question regarding legal matters, it's similar to what you would do, you would ask, put it on agenda, and Terry would come and we would have that legal advice. It's free. They did it for fifteen years for free, amazed me. We're suggesting meeting at this point biweekly, and I think once that confidence level, the communication levels, and people work together, we've done it, it's usually once a month, but it depends on the activity. We had generally, oh, maybe eight to ten projects going simultaneously, so there was... We had generally, oh, maybe eight to 10 projects going simultaneously, so there was quite a bit of activity we had to review. In this case, it'll be five, basically, for this period. And for this bond for Measure E, it's basically two projects, two sites. So, that's pretty much how the program works and what it looks like.
I just say now, you had me at hello. I love the idea. So, we obviously have to all put on our thinking caps to find five or six people who fit that criteria.
Yes, and there's already three or four that have already volunteered, so...
Wonderful. Great. Wonderful. Okay.
Dr. Bregge?
Pardon? Mel, do you have any questions or comments?
I think it's an excellent way to go. I think it can only be helpful, especially in communicating with the public, which we rather desperately need. So, I favor it, and I want to see it tick off.
Well, anytime we can avail ourselves of the brain trust of this community and get that expertise especially in specific for construction, I think that's a positive. I didn't see anything that concerned me about this, having had an opportunity to go out to Los Virginas and see a lot of the components with regard and speak to the people that developed their construction program, including Superintendent Stepanovsky, and the interactions with this committee, with the construction and the information that's brought back to the board, but more importantly, to the community at large. I think it will bridge a lot of gaps on what's going on, how is it occurring, and it seems like a very, very needed aspect to our construction program, something that if maybe we had from the start, we wouldn't have find ourselves where we do today. But moving forward, I'm very encouraged, both with your team, with these concepts, because these are people that are going to give some oversight to you.
Yes.
And anyone that's willing to open themselves up to that and shine a spotlight on themselves, on what they're doing, with the type of people we have in this community, I think that speaks volumes for you, quite frankly. So, I'm looking very, I'm very encouraged to see who would step up. If, I assume there'll be an application process that'll be put out to the community. If you're in development or construction in this community, please, please, make time and join this committee. I think the fruits of this committee are going to go a long way for a successful construction program and actually completing what we started.
Yeah, so, anyone in construction finance as well?
Yes.
Does it, do you want lawyers who do construction defect, construction, you know, things like that? Or what kind of person are you looking for?
Just one.
Right. Well, you want one lawyer, not more. I wouldn't have, I might not have any. So, construction finance, construction, actual construction development, correct?
Yes, and we hope, and it's hard to find guys that are in public works and understand public works.
Right, right.
But the truth is, the methodologies and business models we've brought to you is really from the private sector. Guaranteed maximum price is a concept from the private sector. The way in which we execute and deal with claims of management comes from the private sector.
Got it.
So, the way we work and the way we operate is quite familiar with private executives. But what we're looking for, and I was blessed to have, you know, guys who $300 million a year or more in a work in progress, that have substantial amount of work and know, and for a number of years, and understand from a volume standpoint, is if the bond is continued, if the future funding continues, then the scope of the bond is quite large for a very small school district.
It's long overdue. That's why it's so large. We should have done this 50 years ago.
Believe it or not, there's been one or two times in 15 years I benefited from that brain trust and discovered something I didn't know, and they reminded me of it with gusto. So, it turns out to be, in the end, beneficial for everyone.
Okay. So, if there's no more discussion, I don't have any more. Can we call the question, right? It's just give direction? Okay, even better. I guess then the board will give you direction, Dr. Bregge?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, so, the board is giving you direction to work with Dawn to get the ball rolling.
Great. We're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Okay. We are on to, oh, communication from board members.
So, I'd like to congratulate all of our middle school students who are graduating this year, going on to high school, and also congratulate the high school class of 2018. We're graduating on June 1st, next Friday.
Oh, my gosh.
Kind of bittersweet, but it's an exciting chapter, so congratulations to all of them as they move on to whatever's next. And me, it'll be fun. It'll be a fun day.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, I just want to add my congratulations and best wishes to all of the graduates and wish them well, and have a great summer, too.
Well, we are very blessed in this community. Our children are doing well. They're graduating. I do want to point out that, I express my condolences to the Santa Fe High School shooting victims and their families. Interesting, in the hours after the mass shooting at Texas High School, Houston Police Chief Art Acevedo posted a lengthy explanation on Facebook about gun rights and the need for change. He wrote, "Friday's attack at Santa Fe High School is only the latest high-profile act of violence in the state," and Acevedo has to cope with that. In November, Texas also dealt with 26 people that were killed at a church service in a small town in Sutherland Springs, Texas. On Friday, 10 people, mostly students, were killed while sitting in class. The police chief stated, "I'm not ashamed to admit I've shed tears of sadness and pain and anger," he wrote. "This isn't a time for prayers and study and inaction. It's a time for prayers, action, and asking of God's forgiveness for our inaction, especially the elected officials that ran to cameras today, acted in a solemn manner, called for prayers, and will once again do absolutely nothing." Well, as I sit here, along with my colleagues, we're trying to do something. We've put up fences. We brought additional security. We're trying out armed security. We're bringing professional companies. We're collaborating, working with the police department with regard to their adopted school program. We've brought in consultants with regard to our security. We're doing everything within our power that we believe is reasonable and productive to protect our students and staff here at this school. We heard from a number of people, and you hear it in the community, "Too little, too late. It's not going to accomplish anything." Well, I think that attitude needs to stop now. I think what we're doing and how we're doing it, yeah, there are many different ways we can go about this, but at least we're trying, and we're trying to protect our kids. A lot of other communities only wish they had the resources that we have with our police department that collaborates with us, that a school board that's willing to step up and say, "Hey, enough is enough," along with the students in this community that stepped up and said, "Enough is enough." And as a community, we'll get through this, and we want to make sure that we never, ever, as a parent, as a school board, as a district, have to go through what these other communities have gone through over the last number of years. And with that, I do wish all the graduating classes, I actually look forward to speaking at El Rodeo, this K-8 graduation for the eighth graders. It'll be exciting. And I look forward to another great graduation of our high school seniors. It's a great and busy time of year, and if we haven't returned your calls and letters or the staff hasn't gotten them back to you, or, there's a reason. It's just an incredibly busy time of year, as we all know, and in two short weeks, we all get to exhale.
On the heels of that, I want to wish everyone a great graduation and get to speak at the high school, which is very exciting. The last time I spoke there, my daughter was graduating, my middle daughter. So, it's kind of bittersweet for me. It'll be my last time talking to all you wonderful people. And on the heels of what Howard said, you know, you wake up to another tragedy, and I think as parents, you shudder, and as board members, you just really take stock of what your responsibilities are to this community of schools and people who depend on going there every day and coming out home safe and sound, adults, staff, children. And I, you know, I think greater minds will have to figure out gun control and reasonable regulation and enforcement, but I could say that the only thing that stops a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun and a better aim. So, our goal is to make sure our police are ever-present. I think we have a phenomenal police force. I'm proud to live in a city with these people in blue. They are truly the finest. But I'm also thrilled that Mr. Blake has stepped up and brought us a stellar team to help us do honest assessments of where we're good and where we could be better. And I want to thank all the work of those capable men that have reoriented our thinking about what is actually safe, what is actually, what is a normal expectation of safe. And I want to just say that I applaud NASTEC for showing tremendous professionalism these last two weeks and working so well with Beverly Hills Police and the police working so well with them. Kudos to both groups, especially our police, who have welcomed them to their turf. And I hope soon we will see NASTEC in their full glory and working well with the police and working effectively on our campuses. Our children and our staff deserve to go to school with absolutely no fear and to come home knowing they had a wonderful day in school and they didn't think about what was going on in the rest of the world. So, with that, I just want to also remind people it's Memorial Day on Monday, and we remember our fallen. So, I just, with that, I just want to wish everyone a good evening, and to let you know, our regular board meeting is June 7th, right back here at 5:00 PM, and another regular board meeting on June 19th, right back here at 5:00 PM. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.[1782.83]